All right, ready everybody? I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next, everybody, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 9th at 7:30 PM in the Board of Education meeting room. I'm gonna forego, we've got a long agenda tonight, so I will turn it over to public comment. Seeing none, Dr. Landon.
I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, great. It's moving quickly already. It is requested that the Board approve the following minutes. The minutes of the special meeting and executive session held on March 13th, 2019. Do you want to take them together separately? Executive special and special meeting, March 13th, 2019. We have a motion, Mr. Dineen and Mrs. Ritchie, all in favor. Mrs. McNamara was not here? Okay. So, and any abstaining? Mr. Maroney and Mrs. McNamara. Minutes of the regular meeting held on March 13th, 2019. We have a motion. Mrs. Ritchie, Mr. Burke, all in favor. That's everyone, but any abstaining? McNamara and Maroney. Thank you. We'll move on to Board Committee reports. Mrs. Stein.
Just a brief update from the Superintendent's Search Committee. School leadership did an excellent job of providing us with several qualified candidates. We're in the process of reviewing them, and we will let you know when we have something to share with you all.
Thank you. Is there Miss McCammon, do you hear that?
Yeah, I'm the Board's representative to the Rees Fund. I just wanted to let the Board know that we are just taking a look at the fund. We just need to make sure that the bylaws are consistent with how it's organized and that the fundraising mechanisms are all in place. So, given that we have some time before we need to actually do any planning, just wanted to make the Board aware that that's what will be happening over the next couple of months.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dineen.
The next meeting of the Oxridge Elementary School Building Committee will be this Friday, March 29th, 7:30 AM, Room 206 in Town Hall.
Okay, any other Board Committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentation discussions and begin with an update on implementation of the One-to-One Initiative with iPads at Darien High School. Dr. De Silva and Mr. Schombart.
Right, so I'm going to introduce Mr. Schombart, who is enthusiastically excited to share out the work that has happened at DHS with our iPad One-to-One rollout. I think you will all be just as enthusiastic and you'll see or hear, I think, throughout this presentation, the student voice as well as the teacher voice and certainly on the administrative side, how this influences and impacts our children over the course of time. So, I'll turn it over to Adam.
Thank you, Dr. De Silva. Good evening, everyone, and as Dr. De Silva said, I am absolutely excited to be sharing with you the great work going on at Darien High School with our One-to-One iPad initiative.
Is it working?
It is not. Of course, I'm about to give the technology presentation and the clicker doesn't work. We're joking about that. All right, so, in the next 10 or 15 minutes or so, I'll be sharing with you some updates on our iPad program, focusing specifically on this year's One-to-One rollout, along with looking at what's come before and where we plan on going next, discussing this year's support for that rollout with the launch, with professional development, and how we are helping support the work of our students and the great learning going on at the high school, and sharing some of that great work with you because, while I'm sure you would all love to hear from me, it's really our students who we want to hear from and see the successes that are going on in the classroom. There have been a few slight updates since the presentation that you were giving earlier, and I'm excited to share those with you. So, looking at the kind of context of where we are now, it's important to look back. The iPad program started in the spring of 2017 with a pilot and formally began with our freshman class last year in the fall. Our freshmen received their iPads in November, and then our sophomores followed in the spring of 2018. This school year, we introduced the iPads much earlier, actually in the second rotation of the school year, in the fall of 2018. So, that means that next year, we will have iPads at the high school for all grade levels, which we are very excited about, because while there's a lot of potential with what's happening right now, we think we're gonna see tremendous growth once we have the iPads consistently implemented throughout the school. And so, thinking about that again in the context of student growth, of helping our teachers grow to really support our students' needs with technology and enhance the and transform the learning going on. iPads launched in the fall of 2017. We will be fully one-to-one in the fall of 2019, next school year. But, as we think about how our students grow and develop, the realization that we will not really have had a one-to-one cohort go throughout Darien High School until June of 2021, meaning that the last year's freshmen who first received their iPads will graduate in June of 2021, if I've done my math right, meaning that that's the time when we feel we could really evaluate more thoroughly where we were and where we've grown. Not to say we don't have great successes right now, but we're really excited to see how the program continues as our full school becomes one-to-one and all the students have the same access to this wonderful technology. So, in September, we launched our iPads this year, and we used our advisory program to do so, whereas last year, the iPads were rolled out over a two-week period, taking up class time for either English or science classes, depending on the grade level. This year, we were able to utilize the advisory program with the help of our wonderful freshman advisory teachers, our leaders of the advisory program, but most importantly, our students, our senior linked leaders, and our I-Team students, who are our student help desk program, I'll talk more about in a few minutes, and utilizing these students, we were able to roll out the entire grade level of iPads in the 18-minute advisory period. So, it was a huge improvement for us in getting the technology into our students' hands much earlier and being able to use the technology much more meaningfully and really focusing it all on students, helping students learn and grow. So, we're really excited about that. And these students were trained in helping to not only set up the iPads in their operations, making sure everything worked, but in delivering a mini lesson around digital citizenship to help introduce a lot of the important work that students will be doing with technology throughout the school. And so, we continue that work in our first professional development day of the year and throughout the school year, but I wanted to highlight these two kind of complementing images. On top, you have a group of teachers led by Steve Lee and Sybil O'Hare, who are focusing on the one-to-one classroom management. Steve and Sybil have taught with iPads for a few years, and they were working with new teachers who are newer to the iPads to help support their students in classroom management needs, whereas on the bottom, you have a group of students. This is three, these are three of our I-Team members, and they're leading a panel for our teachers on the students' perspective on the one-to-one classroom. They share tips of how they learn best, of strategies that they think are effective for teachers, of apps and tools that were really powerful, but also, they give teachers some advice of what not to do, of the classroom management strategies, of what to watch out for. And we've done this panel for two years now, and it's been one of the most positive experiences for our teachers and for our students. The I-Team has continued to support technology in the high school in many different ways. The I-Team started last year as sort of our help desk pilot, thinking, how can we use our students, who really are the digital natives, the experts in the land of technology, to improve the work going on in our schools? And in that role, they've assisted in professional development, both in our conference days and throughout the school days, working typically along with our library and media specialists. But they also are taking on projects of their own. They're currently working on creating a, what they're calling the DHS 360 Project, which is a virtual reality tour of the high school with the idea of being able to put that online, share it with prospective students, and share what a day in life at Darien High School is really like. They run our Hour of Code events, along with our programming and computer science clubs and classes. They're creating podcasts and how-to guides to support teachers in using technology. And our I-Team members, our student members on our DHS and district committees, both for technology and for the library committee. So, when we think about technology, we know that we can use technology in so many different ways, and there are so many different types of technology out there. And so, we had to think about, what do we really believe and what are we asking teachers to do with technology at the high school? And so, what we believe is that technology should first and foremost, support our students' needs. It should create new opportunities for learning. It should allow our students to show what they've learned in new ways. It should enhance our curriculum and support our, enhance our instruction and support our curriculum. We're not just using technology for the sake of technology and shiny and new, but we're using it in meaningful, authentic, and productive ways to support the great work that's already happening in our schools. And the more and more I'm there, and the more and more we see, the more we see that great work happening in really authentic places. And so, it's important for us to support that work. And what we don't ask teachers to do is use technology in every situation and every single day. We ask them to find meaningful, authentic ways to do so, but we know teachers need to grow in that regard. We need to help them get to that point. We need to help them find these connections. And so, one of the, one of the ways we do that is we have teachers who, as part of their duty, are on a technology duty where they work in a coaching capacity with other teachers in the building. We have five teachers throughout our departments who are supporting both their own departments and other departments. And that's our second year utilizing teachers in this way, and it's been very successful. We've developed an app using Google Forms for teachers to request help, so that they fill out the form, and it sends a message to the teachers on this duty, so we can easily connect teachers to get the help and development that they need. We also have our Building Technology Committee, along with a district committee that some of our teachers serve on, and our teachers are participating in and leading professional development through our building and also in conferences. We have two upcoming conferences this spring with a number of teachers attending. One of our teachers is presenting on the great work she's doing, so we're really trying to focus on helping our teachers grow to support our students. We're also having, using our faculty meeting and other meeting time to have teachers share all the great work that they're doing in really digestible, student-centered, meaningful ways, and it's been really successful so far. Michael Fallon says that pedagogy is the driver, technology is the accelerator, meaning that technology should help us do things differently, should help us do things better, but it does not replace good teaching. So, for my first example, getting to our students, of course, how are the iPads accelerating learning? Going to start with a very innovative example that might surprise you. Has anyone recognized one of these? Anyone, students come home with one of these? This is a stool. Not a trick question. It's a stool made out of wood, but it's one of the staple projects of our woodworking classes in our tech ed program. And one of our teachers this year, Ms. O'Connor, created what she called a fantastic PowerPoint, like she's always done and like our other teachers have always done, to instruct students through the creation of this stool. And it was an effective lesson. But she connected with one of her students named Grant, who was in her class and had a love of computer science, and together with the tech ed teachers, Grant developed an app, the DHS Woodworking Stool. You can download it in the App Store now. It actually exists, and it is on all of our students' iPads. And what this app does is it provides a how-to in building the stool. Now, the teacher was providing a how-to, but what Grant has done, and done so wonderfully, is provided step-by-step directions with pictures to individualize that process. Now, we've taken a world where the teacher used to need to facilitate every aspect of this and put that power in the hands of our students, so they control the pace of their learning, and now our teacher is able to really work with the students who need it most. So, right there in the App Store, you can find that app, and it is actually being used throughout the woodworking classes now, all created by Grant. In addition to our wonderful stool app, there are many, many, many apps we could be using to support the learning going on in our classrooms. But we've carefully planned and thought about what apps are most effective for our students and working with our committees and with our students to develop sort of our core apps for DHS. So, on the slide here, you have a list of many of the apps that we are using quite successfully. We're not gonna go through them all today, but I do want to highlight a couple of examples of apps and really examples that highlight the creative power of the iPad. There are apps and tools we use that you could use on any technology and any device. And as we become fully one-to-one in the coming years, we're excited to take advantage more and more of what the iPad can do that other devices can't, but right now, our focus again is on meaningful technology for all learners, and there's a variety of ways we see that. And here's the first example.
Jeff, can you fix the volume there?
I think it's on the computer right now. I'm not getting it either.
Yeah, I'm gonna hit the mouse.
Yep.
Or maybe you can move it.
I'm hearing it now.
Right?
Yeah, it's, there's volume, but it's slow. I think it's the projector in, potentially.
I think it's low on the computer there. Can you get it up? Can you do it there?
It's all the way on here. I can't exit. And it's all the way on here. Well, what Cole's going to talk about in a minute is the wonderful note-taking app, Notability. And Notability exists web-based in a lot of formats, but Cole goes on about why he finds the iPad so valuable. And Cole is kind of a unique student within our school because he's a senior with an iPad, and that's because he's one of our I-Team members. And while we're working on the sound, I'll jump to an actual picture of Cole's notes. And what Cole talks about is how he loves the iPad because of its ability to take notes by hand, by typing, and draw all at once. Yes, there are other devices that could do this, but for Cole, it's the portability and the ability to do all this at once. This is a picture of his notes from biology, and he talked about that as one of the examples. And he also stressed how he's excited for next year, students in that same biology class to all be able to do work like this. Jump back and see if we have any success here. Is there a remote for this? There's the volume on there that might help us as well.
Over here? Maybe.
Well, trust me, that's what Cole says. So, now Cole's taking notes in this way, but we have to ask the question of how do we help teachers and give them direction on where they should be going with technology? And so, one of the ways we've done that this year is we focused our whole school goal and our teacher evaluation plan on technology use, and we worked with our technology committee to ask ourselves, what's one of the most high-impact ways that we can make technology matter to support the work students are doing? And so, what we arrived at is asking teachers to transform traditional assessments throughout the year using technology to empower students. How do you take what you're already doing? How do you take that traditional test, project, assessment, whatever it may be, and find a way to give students more ownership of that work that's something we don't need technology for, but using technology provides so many new opportunities in this sort of work? And the next few examples, where some of which sound as less important, highlight some of this work from our students.
And, you're ready?
That's louder.
Hi, I'm Dr. Reed. I'm a junior. I'm Matty Joyce, and I'm a junior too. And I've been using Adobe Spark, my iPad, and my history English class for this project that we've been doing on the 1920s, and I think it's really helpful to get all my information possible. I'm doing the same project, and it's like awful because you're basically putting an essay into a big presentation, so it's just a lot fun way to write the essay and then be able to present it, like use it with pictures, and be able to slide it through.
So, what Bridgette and Matty are talking about is the Adobe Spark Suite, which is a free suite of apps for video editing, graphic design, and other platforms, other similar uses. And last year, we actually brought in a woman named Monica Burns, who's a national writer presenter in all kinds of educational technology-related fields, and did a training with many of our teachers. And now, I didn't know they were going to talk about this. I went around the cafeteria saying, hey, who did something cool with their iPads lately that changed the way you're learning? And that's the example they gave me. So, it was really exciting for us to see, a year later, that this is an example that was meaningful for the teachers and for these students. Mr. Pratt here in his science class, this one just has music with it. Now, if you're like me and the sciences unfamiliar, I have to ask Mrs. Dunn what's going on here. We are seeing the translation of a molecule. Is that right? I think that's right. Through stop-motion animation. So, Mr. Pratt had his students use Stop Motion Studio to show their understanding of the transformation of these molecules in a way that they could not do before. And if you recognize, anyone recognize that music? This is the music from Kahoot, which is a formative assessment tool and app that the students love, and they are obsessed with that music. So, I think that's why they pulled it in there. And my final example, when I reached out to teachers, I had probably about 20 different ones to choose from, so there's a lot out there. This is from Ms. Pettit, and this is an example of the app Explain Everything, which is a digital whiteboard and presentation app.
Creating variables you can plug in to solve a problem.
And what's happening here is Ms. Pettit, along with many of the math teachers in their PLCs this year, took the traditional math review, where the teacher would give out a packet, and students would work, and they would circulate and work with the students and leave saying, everyone's reviewed, and said, how can I give students ownership over that? So, this was a 10-second video or so of a, out of a two-and-a-half-minute longer video, where the students were tasked with creating a review video of how to solve a problem to teach other students. So, all the students in the class were assigned different examples. They all studied those examples, deconstructed them, planned and scripted, and created their videos, and now we have a bank of review materials for 20 students that the students all created on their own, rather than the teacher doing all that work with them. And for them, the teacher is in a position to better facilitate that learning, and the students are taking ownership. So, looking forward, we keep asking ourselves, what's next? And first and foremost, we're most excited for next year, all of our students to have iPads. Right now, as you might expect, it is a challenge in our senior classes and our mixed-grade level classes, where not all of our students have iPads, but we do have many students bringing their own computers and other devices, which we welcome because we want students to take advantage of, one, whatever technology is available, and, two, whatever technology is going to help improve and transform those learning opportunities. But we're excited to have everyone on that same platform next year and be able to really hone in on those iPad-specific uses and that potential. We want to continue expanding our professional learning opportunities, both through conferences and learning from the experts out there in the world, but also really building on expertise in our, in our school. And one of the really successful things we've done recently, like I shared earlier, is just simply taking faculty meeting time and having teachers share for two or three minutes, here's something they did that was really meaningful, and if you want to learn more, come talk to me about it, and teacher-to-teacher professional development and just sharing of successes, and giving them opportunities to share those successes. We're looking to start collecting feedback about the one-to-one program and iPads from all of our stakeholders, potentially starting with our current, or next year's juniors, who would have had iPads the longest and likely have the most to say about it with the most experienced, informative view, but really looking for feedback through, over time, from all of our stakeholders to evaluate the successes of the program. And in terms of the learning, we want to continue to support curriculum-specific technology integration. I think we've had a lot of strength in teachers becoming more comfortable with their iPad uses, and this year, seen a lot of growth in content-specific ways, where the needs for math may be a little different than the needs for English and the needs for tech ed and so on, really helping make sure that all of our teachers have opportunities and the skills and the resources to implement technology effectively in their content and curriculum areas. And we're excited to keep going with it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Board questions or comments? Mrs. McCammon.
Thank you. Super exciting. I have a question about evaluation. My short answer is fine for this one, but is technology embedded in the teacher evaluation process, the use of technology, or is that separate?
So, it could be, and what Adam actually shared with you is that they created a whole school goal around technology for DHS, and then what the teacher practice goals would be, those could be individualized based on my content, my own professional growth, and where I am in that continuum. So, DHS did create a whole school goal around technology, which I think over the, over the long haul, really benefited the teachers and the students.
Okay. And the other is about just evaluating the, thank you, the tools themselves. You mentioned collecting feedback. I'm curious, I'd love to, of course, to balance creativity with formal evaluation and formal, you know, formal decisions, but can you talk a little bit about your formal evaluation process of the tools that you're using?
Absolutely. So, the apps and tools we're using are vetted by our technology committee, and we bring our I-Team into that as well. The I-Team will come to us constantly and ask for new apps, and we'll ask the questions of, well, why is this valuable for education? How does it do something that's different than what we can already do? And the balance we want to strike is making sure, we want, we want students to take advantage of the potential of the iPad, and we want to explore new apps for learning, but also, we don't want to overwhelm students with 1,000 apps that do the same thing. So, we work with the committee to address those questions, along with our administration, and then also with IT to make sure that, is there a cost to the app is always a consideration, and has it met all the Connecticut State Privacy and other regulations, to make sure that it's an app appropriate for student use? So, those are all questions that we ask in that process. After that, apps for students are loaded into what's called their self-service, which is sort of a curated app store, so students can't access every app in the world. We can, we provide them with access to apps that are appropriate for the use at the high school. We are going to be working in the last few months of the school year with the technology committee on exactly, really the heart of your question, on evaluating these apps, because we've seen, just today, I saw teachers using Edge Elastic and teachers using Socrative, two formative assessment apps. They're both wonderful, but which one, is one better than the other? Is one right for some subjects and not for others? Those are questions we certainly don't have the answers to right now, but it's time to start exploring.
Mr. Dineen.
So, just kind of in conjunction with that, Dr. De Silva, maybe, so the I-Team's coming to you with apps, and you're experimenting and looking at them. What's the coordination with all the good stuff you do on curriculum? And when do you get to look at that stuff, the apps and everything? Tell my age, when do you get to look at that stuff that you embed into the curriculum?
That's a process that actually is supported through the high school and our department chairs. So, part of the planning, and actually, Adam referred to a staff developer that came in last year, Monica, who really looked at tailoring the apps to the content, rather than just giving blanket apps or wide range of apps, and so how they're connected into the curriculum in ways that are meaningful. I actually appreciated the math example best, because our students are experienced, and you can go across our math classrooms, and you'll, you'll see a very common experience with the math packets at particular times when the students are reviewing in preparation for an exam. But really, what we want to know is what the math thinking is around that math work. And so, Explain Everything, which is one of the apps, allows our students to do that. So, it's not just completing an answer that they may or may not have figured in their head, and whether or not there was a misconception with their response. We now know that by having the students explain their thinking, where they may or may not have had a misconception about the work. So, it's really facilitated through the high school administration and our department chairs. And again, we're very fortunate, because we have a very clean and clear structure on how apps get curated. And I think the best part of this process is really that we're not, we're not just buying things for the sake of buying them, or even if they're free, because we can get very overwhelmed. I think those of us who have iPads can get very overwhelmed with a number of apps that really serve the same purpose. And so, through the process of having student voice with the I-Team, having teacher voice with teachers selecting, and then having a committee that can help clean that out, that represents all content areas, is an incredible strength of our DHS program.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I have two questions, just two. Who comprises the evaluation committee that you mentioned? And then also, are you getting, I know you said you're gonna do a survey, but are you hearing any feedback now about the usage, and is there resistance of some students to use the iPads? Are they just choosing their own devices rather than the iPads?
So, in terms of our kind of first steps evaluation, we have our Building Technology Committee, which has a teacher from most of our, most of our departments, along with a student member and our library media specialist, and that's kind of our first round of discussion around the evaluation in apps and anything related to building technology use. In terms of resistance, I'll certainly say there are some teachers who are using the iPad every day, and there are some teachers who are resistant, and there are some students who are resistant, but that's the culture of any change, and really, we're excited to keep providing, to keep giving teachers opportunities that are really meaningful, that are, that are connected to student learning and curriculum, and for that, that next step of everyone being one-to-one, because for a freshman and sophomore class, we're really not seeing resistance in the same way as you might from a student in a senior class who, or a junior in a senior class, whose class doesn't all have iPads. So, are students bringing their own devices? Absolutely. There are some, there are some classes and some activities and some apps that are iPad-specific, and we promote the use of the iPad as our primary tool as much as possible and appropriate. and we promote the use of the iPad as our primary tool as much as possible and appropriate, but we are welcoming students to bring their own devices as we continue to grow in the iPad program.
Mrs. Stein.
Mrs. Ritchie asked my question about the other devices.
Mrs. McMar.
Okay, I'll pick up on that. What devices do you find the students bringing if they're not bringing in? Is it just their own iPad or?
Most often, we see students with MacBooks or other laptops. There are classes, I, I was in a class today where I'd say three-quarters of the students were on their iPads, a handful had their own computers, and one or two were on their phones doing the exact same work with the exact same engagement and outcome. I think part of, part of the next steps is standardizing our expectations of why we need the iPads, which is, again, in some classes are going to work very well, and in some classes, it may be okay to bring your own computer, because there may be a benefit to that that we're not seeing, and we want to value our students' kind of individual voice and choice, especially when not every student has access to that iPad. But I'd say their own computers is typically what we'd see, if not the iPad.
Mr. Brown.
I'm sorry, we have a, a, a separate, you touched on it before. Can you talk a little bit more about the scenario where you have the teacher who was very involved in technology and utilizing it versus the teacher who may not be, or the teachers who are using? How are you ensuring that these students are having sort of a, we always say, "Technology is being used because it should be there," so it's not extraneous. It's there for a reason. So how are you evaluating and getting sort of everybody on board? And you mentioned professional development and teachers helping teachers, but when push comes to shove, how are you going to make sure everybody's on board?
I think, well, how are we going to hold everyone accountable? We have, part of that is, we set our expectations, and we have the evaluation plan as a part of that, but I'll say, we're not seeing resistance in that way, in my experience, where teachers are actively resistant to it. More often, what we need to do is build relationships and help the teacher problem-solve. So the teacher who's not as comfortable or is not as open and willing to take that step on their own, help them identify an area of challenge in that class and help them find a tool or use of technology, often starting small, to make that change. And really, that's a lot of the work that the, our, our teachers on that technology duty, with me and with our, even our I-team students at times, and our library media staff, is really focused on, on supporting, supporting those teachers, along with the help of our other administrators and department chairs. So there are times we're certainly putting in extra effort with some teachers, and, and for the most part, those teachers are also asking for help and recognizing the, the need to grow. But we're really not experiencing a resistance in a negative sense in, in, in any way. It's that I've experienced.
Mr. Brown.
I was just wondering, going back to that math video that we saw earlier, who is the owner of that content after it's been created?
Oh, in the Explain Everything? Probably the student, I imagine.
It's tricky law.
Yes, I, I'll say, I am certainly not the authority to answer that question right now.
There are some questions, you are right, Ms. Ritchie. There are some questions regarding who owns content at that point.
Well, once the student leaves us and the content is on the iPad, I think that's part of the, depends on how they shared it, whether they shared it collaboratively. So the teacher makes, have the content, teacher, student may have deleted it or removed it. I think it just probably depends.
There, there are options for students when they leave, leave the high school to leave with copies of all of their resources and materials, something we would hope they would do, and be creating artifacts of their learning that they want to take with them, but that's something we do have to explore further.
Okay. And, and I guess, is that question platform contingent? Does it matter whether it's on the iPad or versus the Google Chromebooks? Is it a question broadly across devices?
So the, the Chromebook content is a little bit easier. It's on our system, so that content is ours. Once the students don't have an email address, we still have all that content. It's slightly different than the iPads and how the apps actually draw from the content as well. So I think that is an easier response, is that that content belongs to us off of the DPS email.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Maroni.
Yes, so our students in elementary and middle school have Chromebooks, and the high school goes to iPads. Have we seen a difficulty in transitioning from one to the other?
For some students, occasionally. Overwhelmingly, no, I wouldn't say so, but part of that was also an awareness of, we need, our teachers need to prepare for that. I think if anything, we've seen a, an easier transition, because it's the first time we've had students transition directly from one-to-one to one-to-one, although it's a different device. But secondarily, students who are often utilizing iPhones and other Apple products, the, there is a learning curve for some students, and there's always a learning curve for how to use technology in meaningful ways in different contexts, but I wouldn't say it's been a barrier overall.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McCannan.
One more, just to, when we rolled out the one-to-one, one of the considerations we had was that we didn't want to do a lot of BYO, because we couldn't manage the content and the apps to which, which the students were accessing. Can you comment on, it sounds like there's a bit of a change in practice. Is this a change in practice, and do we have any concerns about students using devices outside of this environment?
I think it's something we need to continue to evaluate, but I wouldn't call it a change of practice, because primarily, it's happening with our upperclassmen who don't have the iPads. And also, until we're able to set the culture of, we use iPads in our classes, it's, it's hard to pick and choose. I, I would say it's more the exception than the rule, but it is something we want to look, look at further.
Thank you.
So could I just follow up? We issue each student an iPad, so they have it available. At, at the moment, it's, it sounds like some students are choosing to bring it, but if there was anything iPad-specific, that child has been issued an iPad, so that they could utilize it, correct?
Yes. Absolutely. That's all of our students have access to iPads, or within nine through, nine through 11.
Thank you. We, I think we were all anxiously awaiting this update, so we, we appreciate it. Any other board comments or questions? Thank you so much.
I just want to commend Adam and the administration of DHS, the teachers, because a significant part of this success is really, I know that it's directly related to how supportive our administration, our staff have been to our teachers, also how open our teachers have been, and I think Adam said it well, in terms of resistance, we haven't experienced that overall. Certainly, teachers are on a different continuum in terms of their own professional learning growth, but that's not because they're resistant, that's just because they need more support. And I think that the, I know that the thoughtfulness in preparation and supportiveness of teachers with the technology committee, with the I-team, the process in which the apps are curated has benefited the entire DHS community. Even the selection of the device and the shift in platform could have really been tricky. And I think overall, the, the process was a huge success as a result of the, the people, really. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the very exciting tentative recommendation for establishing a 2019 Darien High School graduation date. Dr. Landon.
With our two snow days from August 30th, so our school 180 days occurs on June 18th. So assuming, sorry, June 18th, so assuming that we have no snow days and no emergencies between now and April 1st, should the board approve June 18th on this night, we shall declare on April 1st, the graduation will be June 18th.
So can we, can we vote on this tonight?
I think you can, because we're not meeting till April 9th, and I, every, and people are anxious to know.
It's an interesting, well, it has possible action, but it procedurally.
We could amend the agenda to add an actual item on.
Oh, sorry, I was on sake. So we would have to amend, but I'm sure the parents would appreciate if we would amend our agenda so they could set their calendars. So, let me table this conversation for a moment.
So we can approve it now, but it wouldn't be officially announced.
It would not be in effect until April 1st, which we typically don't do till after. So I don't think we should set it until, we can't vote until April 9th.
Yeah. We've had nor'easters in March.
My, my colleagues tell me you're right.
Yeah. I mean, I, I loved how willing you were, because the parents would love this.
At least people are on notice now.
Spread the word.
There's a date, there's a date out there, people can.
And hope for no snow. So we will revisit it at our next meeting, April 9th.
April 9th.
We just need to get past the 1st.
Yeah.
Mr. Maroni.
Sorry. This has always been a personal issue of mine on graduation, and I, I really, I wish, and this, I'm just going to go off a little, but I wish Connecticut would allow this to be established in different ways. I have nieces and nephews who live in Massachusetts, and they are able to set their graduation day the same day. So their graduation is the first Saturday in June every year. And so it makes it much easier to plan, to allow relatives from out of state to go, because it's difficult to get relatives from Massachusetts on a Tuesday night to graduation. So to me, it would be great if we could find a way, and there is a statute that allows 185 days after the start of school, but I don't think anybody wants to go to school three days later than graduate, than the last day of school to graduate. So, but I wish Connecticut had a way to do this easily, to allow parents and siblings to, to have a date scheduled before April 1st.
I agree. I have directions to Hartford, I'm happy to share them.
Well, there is, there is a, there is a bill.
Okay.
I'm sure there is.
So, 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 I mean, it's interesting, and we can share it, but, but.
I'll send it, I'll send it out to the board.
Okay, you can send it out to the board. Mrs. McMar, do you have a question?
No, I, I have a con, sort of picking up what Dennis is saying, that I was always wondering, what is the opinion of the community? Do we always like to have it on the last day, whether it's a Tuesday, a Monday, or a Wednesday? Wilton, for example, does weekends or Fridays, so, whether it's the April 1st, that's legislature, we can't change that at the moment, but we could pick the Friday following the last day. I mean, I just, I'm throwing it out there, has it been an issue? Is it something the community would like? Should we entertain it?
So the community has let us breathe a lot of snow if they feel differently.
We've never done it.
I think.
Or do they feel like we, they don't have a choice? I'm just curious. Is it that we've always done it this way, so we haven't heard, or is it something we think that the Darien High School senior community would like to consider, or going forward to move it to the weekend after the last day? I'm just throwing it out there, so.
I think people want to leave town.
Okay, if they want to leave town, they want, that's fair. I mean, I just wanted to say that it's not set in stone, that we can decide to change it if we wish, if there's appetite for it.
The board could change, I guess, tradition, and that would be a much deeper conversation, but we still would not be able to set it until April 1st.
Correct, no.
Unless House Bill 7258 passes.
Yes, so we're, much like most of Hartford, unless things pass, by July, we will be in the same, so if it does, Mr. Brown.
Oh, a question, sorry. Do we, is it, do we have to have graduation be the last day of school, or could we graduate?
No, you don't have to. That is, in the state of Connecticut.
No, 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 my, my point is, can you graduate at 178 days? Can you go where it's?
The Friday before.
That Friday before and say, "You owe me two days."
You have graduation on Saturday, last day of school Tuesday.
So, so let's ask the administration, since we are not the experts on that.
No, you couldn't.
But, but in all honesty, I think we would have to see an appetite.
Fair enough.
But what would it be like to graduate seniors and then ask them to come back, so their, their diplomas would be conditional? I'm not sure any parent would like that.
I think it depends on how many snow days you have in a year, because if you have a significant number of snow days and the day is pushed out closer to the end of June, you're going to find a lot of seniors, a lot of graduating seniors won't come back, because they have, some of them are counselors at camps, others have summer jobs, others are involved in pre-college activities. So, I think, if you do it after graduation, I think you'll have some difficulty in getting all of your seniors back, and, and I'm pretty sure there'll be people in the community who will resent that, because their kids can't be at graduation and the relatives can't come and see them graduate.
Deeper conversation. Tonight's agenda was setting the tentative date, but if it's something we'd like to discuss, you can bring it up during Goals and Objectives, if you feel like it's something the administration, you'd like the administration to look at in the future, but it's a significant change of practice, so I also think we would need to hear from the community if they're looking for that change in practice, which isn't say that, is or isn't, I just haven't heard one way or the other. Any other thoughts, comments? Mr. Maroni, got something for me?
I've said my piece on this one.
Yeah, so bring it in if anyone wants.
I can actually go home to my wife and, and hopefully she's watching this.
So it's a wife issue. Mr. Brown.
Just to the point earlier about Massachusetts, I remember the first day of school was always the first Wednesday after Labor Day, but perhaps we could look at that.
That's also in Hartford.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are now off agenda. We are going to move on to the discussion and possible action on the proposed change at the Darien High School Professional Learning Communities from May 10th to May 17th. Dr. De Silva and Mrs. Dunn.
I'm going to turn it right over to Mrs. Dunn.
Well, we're back to talk about the prom. We have all the happy discussions now, the, the technology, the graduation, and, and prom. Prom is going to be held on May 17th, and so we request to move the Professional Learning Community Morning, that's on the calendar right now, to an early dismissal on the 17th that allows us to follow a half-day schedule that day and allow students to go home. Our teachers meet for their PLC in the afternoon, and everyone can get the nails and the hair at the doctors in Darien.
So, so typically, if we were not to do a PLC, do we see a high absentee rate that afternoon?
Yes. So the last couple of years, we've done this to accommodate. Our students have some time and not, there's no disruption to the school day as a result, so.
Mrs. Ritchie.
So just be ending 90 minutes or?
12:18 is the end of the school day, right?
Okay. I just, I was on the calendar the other day, and I actually already see it online on the calendar, on the school website.
It may be, it may be, because we've done it the last two years, but.
Probably shouldn't be up yet.
The board calendar.
We will, is there any other questions on it?
What's up? What was up on the website? When I went on the calendar, I feel like I already saw that it was on there. I started doing our planning based on the fact that it was going to be an early dismissal, so.
It may be that they have updated it before I've come here.
So, when, when is the date for the prom set? Just for planning purposes, when we set our calendar, why don't we just do the PLC?
Yeah, it, it usually is sets as some time period after the prom from the previous year. So in the coming weeks, we'll meet with the incoming senior class and discuss the site we were at. We don't want to force upon them the site we were just at, so it requires some time for students to make the decision about, do we want to commit to this particular site or go to a different venue for the following year? So that, that kind of influences the date.
But we could make our May PLC day an afternoon.
So we also. It's likely to always be right after the AP test. We, we will try to do the prom at the last day of APs, so that there's no disruption to that up until then, so.
So, may I have, any other questions? May I have a motion to move the Darien High School Professional Learning Communities from May 10th to May 17th and at the end of the school day? Mrs. McMar.
Second.
Mr. Maroni, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. De Silva.
Make them.
We'll move on to the presentation, discussion, and possible action on proposed middle-sex middle-school field trips. Dr. Landon and Mrs. Summers.
Let me just begin by stating that I have met with Ms. Summers on this issue, and discussed with her some of the major issues that impinged upon successful overnight trips last year and in the past. And as, as I look at what the proposal is, I think from an educational point of view, an alternative to what we've been doing, which is not an overnight trip, it's probably in the best interests of our kids, and based on surveys of kids who've been on these overnight trips, I believe that those who've been on the overnight trip would agree. But I leave this to Ms. Summers.
Good evening. Last year, I was here and made a proposal to change each trip, the sixth and the eighth grade trip, and I wish I was here to report that our endeavors were a huge success overwhelmingly enjoyed by all students, but unfortunately, that is not the case. So for, since the trips happened, I've been reflecting on them, thinking about what to do, talking to people, collaborating with teachers and some of the committees that we have at school, to come up with a plan that would better serve not only the academic needs, but the social-emotional needs of our middle-school students. So these are the points that I want to address. Social-emotional impact of our overnight sixth-grade trip, attendance, health and wellness, as well as the cost. So what I tried to do last year was to connect the trip to our social-emotional learning program, so that it would be a team-building experience whereby students would get to know one another better, interact with their team, this, the grade level at large, as well as their teachers. The purpose of a field trip, team-building, peer interactions, critical thinking, and problem-solving. That's why we changed the venue and we changed the activities of the trip. The challenges that we faced with the sixth grade were organizing the trip, the maturity level of the students, and the ability to self-advocate while they were away from home, some children for the first time, some, and especially in a bunk situation, not all of[1794.23] our kids go to camp or have had that opportunity yet. So here's some data. We have three hundred and eighty-two students. Three hundred and fifty-two attended the trip, thirty obviously didn't, and seven didn't attend school. We did have an alternate, alternate activities for those that decided not to attend for a variety of reasons, which I will discuss. The first of which is bunkmate selection. The amount of anxiety about the sleeping arrangements, the students who perhaps haven't connected to another peer and then are not thus selected as that one in the sixth grade, you don't pick your whole bunk, because we understand that that would just be a debacle, but you do put down someone with whom you would like to room. And the anxiety of our students about this does more harm than good. Responsibility and self-advocacy, it's really difficult for sixth graders to speak up in a camp-type situation in front of their peers if things aren't going well, if they're experiencing homesick, if they're lonely, if they don't like the activities. And that all comes out at night, when it's time to settle down, where they miss home, where there's no contact at all really with the parents. Nights bring out fears and tears. The night activities are sometimes less structured, and therefore students have a bit of downtime to reflect on sometimes how miserable they are. We had on this trip twenty-three students with food allergies and/or diabetes. We had a hundred and sixty medications sent and three hundred and fifty doses of a variety of medications administered by the nurses that were on the trip. It's a different world. Not only, there's just the rolly cases of the, we needed our own bus just for the meds and the nurses, I think. We had, a cost was three hundred and eighty-six dollars per child, and this year we awarded four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars in assistance for that trip. Our thinking, nobody should go because of lack of funds, and that's the number that we came up with. So what I'm proposing is that we don't go away overnight, but rather we have a team-building experience on campus. I've discussed this, we have a committee at school of teachers that work with me on social-emotional learning, and I also worked with the Mountain Workshop folks in coming up with a plan. We spend the first week of school for sixth graders and really seventh and eighth in orientation, everything from digital citizenship to how to open your locker, to how to make new friends and join a, a table at lunch if you need help with those social skills. So this would fit nicely into that orientation week. Our focus would be, as indicated there, joining a group, which is, can be a big problem. It's scary to walk into the cafeteria sometimes. How to problem-solve, how to listen to others, how to use leadership skills, and how to make new friends. Some of our students, based on the way scheduling occurs, won't have their best friends from their elementary school as their friend group anymore. They will not be on the team with, necessarily with that, with their entire elementary posse, if you will. So we feel that by putting this trip on campus during this time would have a huge impact on social-emotional growth for our students. So these are the logistics. Two teams on day one, two teams on day two, do team-building experiences, addressing all of the goals that I just went over. On the third day, the whole sixth grade works together in a field day type thing with a variety of activities. Students are mixed to encourage that, those cross-team friends, and also to revisit some of the friends who might not be on their current team. And again, this is part of our orientation week activities, and the design of which is to, to build those skills necessary for really the rest of the year, so that students feel like they have a place, that they've been, they have a, developed some kind of rapport with teachers as well as with other students. And here's the benefits. No loss of instructional time, no one is left out, all of the activities are challenged by choice, but they are specifically designed so that no one is left out, so that everyone can participate successfully. They do a number of different kinds of things, like getting from point A to point B, and you're only allowed to take, make three steps, and you have to get everybody over, those kinds of things where they have to problem-solve and work together. That could easily be done on campus. There's no reason to travel overnight to accomplish the goals of this program. That's sixth grade.
Would it make sense to?
Yeah. Talk six and eight.
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
So comments and questions on what we've heard? Mrs. McNameer.
A bunch of questions, but I'll just start with one, and we can move from there. Your plan to bring it in-house, how would that curriculum be developed? Would you use an outside or develop internally? How would that?
So we've had a very, we've had, we've been very successful in working with Mountain Workshop in our seventh and eighth grade. Seventh is here at the beach in Darien, eighth grade goes to a camp in Massachusetts. So I have been working with them to develop those activities and goals that are specific to that age group and that developmental level. So there would be a continuum. So not only would they get to have the sixth-grade trip, but then the seventh and eighth-grade team-building experiences that we do right at the beginning of school would build upon what students experienced and learned in their sixth-grade year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burke.
To what extent, if any, have you shared this, this thought about this change with the parent groups in the, the middle school?
I've only, I've shared it with my MPA leaders, and so far, they're here, yeah, they're here, and they, they support the initiative. It, I haven't, obviously I came to you first. I didn't put it out to them.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I, I did reach out to a bunch of parents and got feedback from them on their children's individual experience, and I have to tell you, it was all positive. I think parents would be disappointed in losing, especially the eighth-grade trip.
Okay, so we'll talk about the eighth-grade trip. But I did reach out to parents who had sixth graders that went on the trip.
And certainly, certainly past the moment, we do tend to remember the positive points of a trip. The positive points of this trip from a student point of view were the activities and were the problem-solving and working with the Mountain Workshop staff. Some of the debacles. Bus companies, just like airlines, overbook. So coming home, there was not enough buses. On the phone, because I was unable to attend the trips this year, on the phone, I had the map in front of me, the DATCO guy was telling me, yeah, there's a bus on the way, and I'm looking at, no, there isn't. And there wasn't. We were very lucky, the, the same thing happened to us with the eighth-grade trip outgoing. And, and that's when I realized this is what bus companies do. And I asked the guy, and he said, yes, that is what we do. And I guess then you just hope for the best. So we were very lucky in that there was a sports competition, a number of parents had requested to pick their children up from camp because it was closer, so that we had, could consolidate our buses. So that's the first thing. I planned this purposely early in the year, and of course, it was the coldest weather ever reported in that month in history.
Versus like, where it used to be.
Yeah, where it used to. So we moved it from there, and it was so cold for students and teachers that it was, and that's one thing I couldn't change. And it was cold for the whole time. So sleeping, you know, it was specifically planned for warmer weather, and we all, we generally do have warm weather then. There was a little touch of salmonella going around upon the return, and I met with the owner of the, we couldn't quite track it. We, we did cleanliness checks, we did food checks, we did everything in both states. Their kitchen was cleared. We knew it didn't happen in our middle-school kitchen upon the return. We had one student who, because we do have some discipline issues when that number of students are together, and especially in the evening, had to have stitches in her forehead. It was just an accident, it was nothing like major, like a fight or anything, somebody had a broom and it slipped and it hit the kid on the head, and so on and so forth. Not to mention the number of visits to the nurses there and so on. So I'm not trying to be negative, however, I think that the positive reports I got were in actually students working with students, which could happen on our campus as well as away from home. Many of our students do have that camping experience because they go to, they go to camp. They go to overnight camp in the summer, and I don't know that the reason for having a trip is to provide a camping experience for students when the goal of the trip is really to provide opportunities for students to work together, to get to know one another, and to find out who they are in relation to their team and to future activities on the team and in middle-sex.
Mrs. McCammon.
With all, certainly I respect that there's a tremendous logistical component to this, and you've outlined it very clearly. Thank you. That said, I think one of the reasons why we, at least I have historically understood these trips to be successful is that when you take children out of their current environment and reset it, they reset in certain ways, so that they may engage socially differently. I'm not the child development expert, so I see that, but, but I think sometimes changing the environment changes the dynamic and provides a different set of opportunities.
And I would have to say in both the sixth grade and eighth grade experience, that that was then, and this is now, that students have changed, student needs have changed, student development, though developmentally, students move along the same as they always have, but some of the things that they rely on, some of the things that they need, some of their immediate needs are a little bit different than perhaps when a nature's classroom type trip was planned. Kids are used to being in contact with parents pretty much all day long, especially once they get the phone at middle school, and this opportunity is not available to, certainly we let kids call home when they need to call home, but you know what I mean? It's just not like picking up the phone and checking with mom or texting. And, and that, that was a, a huge factor. Also, I would have to say that I, I, I don't, I don't think that's true. I think kids do change, sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worse. When taken out of, out of their environment, sometimes students will rise to the occasion and become leaders within their group, and others become more of the, the shrinking violet, violet types because they are having to deal with a lot of new challenges all at once.
Mrs. McNameer.
Just for the sake of the presentation, could you just clarify what the current sixth-grade trip looks like? You haven't really elaborated.
The current sixth grade trip is, it was nature's classroom, which had a very loose, no connection really to our current science curriculum, especially with the change of the standards, and now it is a social-emotional trip, and it was the same challenges that we could provide at campus, on campus, but it was an overnight, two nights and three glorious days, participating in these types of activities.
In October, right, or?
I think it was early October last year, yeah.
Mr. Brown.
Sorry, just to understand the scope of what we're talking about is in the new program. I heard the challenges with weather last year with the cold. So are we talking about this is a program we could do in the gym if we had opposite problems, rain or heat?
We could make arrangements, and it's also easier to change dates, which I have had to do with Mountain Workshop when we used the beach in Darien, and it was a horrific rainy day. They're very flexible, we, we always have a backup day, so it would be a lot easier. You can't, this was hard, we had buses, we had all kinds of chaperones, we had teacher chaperones, paraprofessional chaperones, et cetera.
But did I understand that this was supposed to coincide with the beginning of the school year to build some of those kinds of experiences?
Correct.
So it would be around the start of the school year, ideally?
Correct.
So, Mrs. McCammon, just a minute, I want to, I want to build off of something that Mr., I think, I think you're on, or at least I picked up on with your comment. And we'll talk about eighth grade separately, but I think I hear you saying that if we're team-building in sixth grade, and sixth grade is new to everybody anyway, a new environment is not necessary, because the environment is new, if done at the beginning of the school year anyway. I mean, eighth grade is different, you've been in middle school for a long time, and we can talk about that, but if it's a new setting, and I'm trying to pick up a thread of what you both said, it is middle school inherently as a new setting.
Correct.
And so you think that the same social-emotional goals could be met on campus versus off?
I do, I do. And, and that, and that's the point, there's no, in my opinion, need to, to take children away and keep them overnight when they could have the, the experience and those positive things without the stress, without the stress of the overnight.
Okay, Mrs. McNameer.
I'm sorry, then, I just wanted, as with the same theme, to clarify, is what you're proposing would be housed on the campus of middle-sex or housed in Darien to avoid the overnight and all the issues of the overnight?
On the campus of Darien, we would set up the activities.
Okay, so it would be on middle-sex.
Yeah, the other thing, what about, so there's thirty students who did not get to participate with their peers in these activities for one reason or another. And that's, number has been growing over the years, and is of concern to me because I think that all children would benefit from these opportunities, and it's noticeable when someone's missing, you know? And I think that this gives students the opportunity to, even if they participate peripherally, to be part of the group, whereas before, they don't even come to, they're starting to not come to school.
May I, may I just suggest that, I know thirty-eight would be ten percent, but thirty's pretty close. And if ten percent of your population isn't participating, my concern would be, how are those children viewed by others who participate? And what happens to them from their own self-image if they don't feel like they're a part of the school program?
I agree.
Just a comment.
Okay, so does the board have questions on sixth grade and want to move on to eighth? Okay, so want to move on to eighth, please?
So last year, we added a day and a lot of different venues to the trip, some of which were popular, and we did survey students, and we got two hundred and?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll get there.
And so we decided?
The trip was two nights in Boston. The venues were tied to the curriculum. We expanded the venues to include things like the Science Museum, a few different kinds of things, like a trip to Fenway, Harvard, et cetera, to increase interest and engagement in the trip. The trip follows the curriculum, the American history curriculum, and they walk some of the Freedom Trail, see Paul Revere's house, et cetera, go to the Salem, and Quincy Market and hotel. We took away some of the evening, replaced some of the evening things with other evening events. So the rationale for restructuring the trip is again, social-emotional impact, attendance, health and well, same things as in the sixth grade. The purpose of a field trip in the eighth grade was real-world learning, a connection to content, and, and again, social-emotional growth, and interacting with peers and staff. So we had a few challenges in the eighth-grade trip, and the saddest to me was the disengagement of students with the curriculum. To students, the purpose of the trip was hanging out with their friends and hotel and et cetera, and the Freedom Trail really didn't do it for them. One child's comment was, we already learned about this, why are we here? But the worst is the hotel room planning, which starts in seventh grade, and those of us who know eighth graders or who are parents to eighth graders know that in eighth grade, students are trying, are vying for social position. There's quote, "popular," there's kids who are maybe not so popular, there's those in between, and there's a lot of changing around before the eighth-grade year and high school. Again, this trip is done at the beginning of the year. And I didn't realize that hotel rooms are starting to be planned, because students do get to submit a request for hotel rooms. And so we've had a lot of controversy at the school, one, that there's four children per hotel room, that means two kids in a bed, where prior to, you know, years ago, I, I don't think that it came up. There's a lot of new issues and new considerations in choosing or in, in rooming students that way. But it just causes incredible angst, even more than mistletoe magic, which, that's another story, but the anxiety and the buildup is, is crazy. And what about the kid who was once in a room and then is booted out of the room? And I promise you, it happens over and over and over. And I don't know what we're teaching kids by this, I just don't know. Of course, if you have a kid who's in the quote, "popular," then I guess it's not a problem, but I, I have to look at, at the social-emotional well-being of all students, and I think it is very detrimental to mental health. Many of our students suffer from anxiety. Many of our students suffer from anxiety, depression, not fitting in, not being as good as the other guy. And basically, some of them are told, "No, sorry, room's filled." And we also had a few disciplinary issues. Not to, not that that's not expected. Anytime you're dealing with three hundred, that's the other thing. We are taking over like three hundred students somewhere. Which, if you think about it, out of the context of being an educator's crazy, but we'll continue. So here was my favorite, my two hundred and seventy-three respondents out of the three hundred and something that went on the trip. And the blue is their favorite part, and that is the social piece. The bus, the hotel, and of course Quincy Market, hanging with their friends and shopping. All the times that students aren't engaged in education is, of course, they're eighth graders. It's, it's not rocket science, is their favorite time. Fenway was popular. The science museum, I was happy to say, is popular. But our traditional venues, my favorite of which is Plymouth Plantation, kind of didn't make the cut. And so again, what value is this trip adding as far as a real world connection to our history curriculum? And here's our stats, three fifty-five, three hundred and twenty-four went, twenty-four didn't, and eight did not attend school during that time. There was a number of reasons that students didn't go. And I was very involved with parents who were making that decision whether their students should attend or not. Roommate selection, sleeping arrangements and behavior. Behavior towards one another. It, it, it wasn't nice. It just wasn't nice. Students were even in the social situations, not very open to other than perhaps their friend group. And it made for a lot of hurt feelings and a bit of acting out. We had some problems in the hotel rooms, which again, we go into that knowing that there's going to be problems in the hotel room. I think the throwing up at three in the morning though was probably a little much for our nurses, even though that's to be expected too. Someone probably just ate a lot of junk that they might have brought and that was the result. But also just a little discipline in the less structured times. Here, here's the data. Twenty-seven students with food allergies, seven with dietary restrictions, a respiratory problem, a diabetic student, a hundred and sixty medications administered, three injectable. So we had, the nurses were quite busy. And here's our cost and our scholarship amount for this. So I do have a proposed, several, well, a two-part proposal. There works in progress. Nothing is set, nothing that I'm, I'm really happy with yet. Something that they used to do at Middlesex was Colonial Day. This preceded the Boston trip. There were local group of reenactors and people from historical societies that would set up different stations throughout the building. And students would work with a group going to each station to look at, examine different aspects of colonial life. So they still would have that connection to the curriculum. I don't know why that, that's the L that you were talking about that I missed in editing. And we know what the learning outcome is in, in relation to the curriculum. So this is just what it looks like. Benefits. This is on campus, interactive group activities. And there's immediate follow-up in class. When kids get home from Boston, other than a survey in their journals, they do have an assignment to complete. I don't know, there, there's not that give and take of how does this fit into my study of history? It's just a project that is handed in. Also, the cultural awareness of, this is from whence we came, and, and a bit of critical thinking in trying to analyze what life was like compared to what life is like and all of the things that happened historically in between. So that's one part. That's to keep the curricular connection. The other part, I can't, is an idea that was shared with me. We're working on a capstone project, which I haven't really reported out to you on. And it's a pilot project that we have started in connection with our digital portfolio. That's a three-year research project, basically, where students examine change. So in the sixth grade, they examine change at the community and school level and how they can impact it. In the seventh grade, they expand upon that and look at change through my state, who are my legislator, legislators. How do I impact change there? And then in eighth grade, the idea is have them look globally. How does one, even a kid, go about impacting a, a global kind of change? Who do I contact? What do I do? How do I research this? What are the connections? So what I would like to do would be to tie a field trip to this capstone project for eighth graders at the beginning of the school year to kind of form their research as the year goes on and they present their capstone at the end of the year. It's going to be based on student choice. So, and ask me questions about this, so I'll explain my thinking. Students will have three menus of activities. If you're a humanities student, or, or that's where your research is driving you or your passion or your essential question that you develop, then you would visit venues that would help you to understand that, that part of your research. So for example, you might go to Ellis Island, Statue of Liberty, Tenement Museum, and look at that in terms of, are these, how, how, how can I impact change by researching? What can I get from these sites that will help me to shape my project? If you're a math and science person, we have the Liberty Science Museum. These are the two venues I haven't yet visited, and the math museum. So they're not, they're, these are just ideas. And in each of those two, there's also an art component because we tend to not integrate the arts into our thinking often when we're focused so on academics and research. But certainly, we all know that art is really a measure of change. And it's the way that we talk about change is really through the different arts. So I would like each of those to experience some art thing. Again, I'm working with a tour person, so this is just kind of a thought. And then in the evening, a, a shared fun experience, whether it's a show, whether it's, there's a boat around the harbor and dinner. The third menu that I've kind of come up with that's not listed here is what about government and medicine? So I'm exploring a visit to Sloan Kettering, where I know in the high school they have an internship program. And also for those who are involved in politics, the UN. And then those other shared experiences. So a student would get to choose where they would go. It would be an extended, one-day trip, let's say, again, not written in stone, six-thirty to nine-thirty on one Friday for two groups. And then the other two groups would go to the menu of their choice. We would run those, each of those trips twice the following Friday. And that, they would have specific goals at, for the, visiting these venues as far as their research goes. So it's personalized learning. It's student-driven. We don't have to worry about engagement because they have decided the path that they would take in their research and in their capstone and how, how that would look. So each day ends with the same cultural experience. And right now, I just have humanities and math and science. I just started working with person in the medical field for venues in that. The benefits are connection to capstone, student goal-stetting, student choice, and shared social experience. We all know that in the middle school, one of the things that I'm trying to do is to have students become critical thinkers and to discover what their passions are and also to have some choice. And we don't afford them much choice in academics, certainly. They have a prescribed course of study. And I think that this would be a good way for them to really think and decide what their, where and lie their interests. And I just went over all that.
That's all right. Board questions and comments. Mrs. Stein?
I have a couple. Thank you for the explanation of capstone because I think a few of us were waiting to hear more and I can't wait to hear more about it. But in what I, after reading your presentation, I'm hearing I have a few different questions. So if we're talking about a capstone starting in sixth grade, we're not really talking about a trip like this for three years because you haven't yet started with the current sixth and seventh graders. So I think about seventh graders thinking they're going to Boston and next year they're going to do what?
No, we're going to do this. Seventh grade has started.
They've already started their capstone project?
Yes. They have to commit to a capstone theme at the end of this year.
But so, okay, so where will they begin in that? Because if it starts sixth grade with my community, seventh grade-
Okay. So what, what a capstone is attached to is also the development of skills. I think my first month or two at Middlesex, a couple of years ago, students were giving presentation without having any specific, been taught any specific skills in doing that. They've been asked to do research without knowing exactly what to do. What sites do I use? So we've broken down the skills that students need to do this. And for example, in sixth grade, this year in their explanation or their exploration, they're creating a wee video kind of thing as their culminating project to what they have discovered about the topic of their choice. They pursue that topic or expand upon it in the seventh grade. Again, what they're doing is learning, expanding upon their research, honing in on, on what matters to them. And they have pretty structured lessons that involve a lot of technology, a lot of direct instruction. We have people that push in, the school counselors push in, the media center folks push in. And they work towards developing, further developing a topic. And they're, they're pretty engaged in it. All this is captured in their digital portfolio as well. So that by the end of this year, they have a body of work. They just completed letters writing to congressmen, legislatures, whoever they thought would impact change and their, their given topic.
So I imagine, okay, I imagine that this is going to engender a lot of conversation because we haven't heard about capstone as part of curriculum. So I think we need to hear about capstone.
A little bit.
I think, so as we go down lines of questions, let's just acknowledge we haven't heard about capstone and maybe we can plan to bring what the project is and how it's working. Because it sounds like you're probably implementing and we haven't heard about it yet. So let's make a point to hear about capstone specifically.
I believe it's on the agenda for either the ninth or the twenty-third of April.
Okay. So capstone questions, ninth and twenty-third of April. But Boston or field trip questions. Mrs. McCammon?
Okay. Staying with Boston. When, and then in light of our capstone conversation later, when do you need to start making plans definitively for Boston in the event it goes through for next year?
No.
Yeah, that's what-
Mrs. Ritchie?
I'm sorry. No, no, I just, so now meaning you need to get to the bus company and the venues and-
Yeah, but we're not behind.
Okay, all right. So the end of April is workable.
But is that the same if you were to start planning for next year?
That's what I'm starting to ask you. What is the timeframe for next year?
No, 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 no. Is that the same if you were starting to plan for this New York version of your trip? Do you need to start planning now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Ritchie?
We don't have a proposal, like a firm proposal in front of us tonight. We're just discussing the potential of changing from these two overnight trips to these other alternatives. So we, we aren't looking at firm proposals right now. We're not voting on anything tonight. It's on for possible action.
Well, so I think, I think the possible action is the prob, is the problem. And I think that's what we need to understand, is that the board does not send kids to nature's classroom or Boston. It's parent-driven. So the board only approves field trips. And we don't have a field trip in front of us to approve. So if what the administration is saying is that they are not planning Boston or nature's classroom, I think you need to communicate that with parents, but it's not board action.
That's right.
The action will be when you have a firm field trip to bring it to us and we approve that field trip. Because it's a lovely, as Mr. Tane did the math, $200,000 field trip that the parents support, not the district. And so I don't think there's action in front of us tonight.
I, I agree with you that we would have to have you approve the next field trip, whether it, whether it were to be Boston or something new. I have to tell you though, you know, I listened to the arguments tonight and I'm even more convinced that the proposal has an incredible amount of merit. And in talking to Shelley also, one of the things that was on our agenda was a visit to the nine eleven memorial museum, which is an incredible experience for kids. And it's current and it's not, you know, you're not walking the Freedom Trail. I mean, you know, you, you're going where something that they understand and they know and they've been a part of. So there's so many exciting things that could be developed. Yeah, I think, I think we ought to come up with a, give you an opportunity to vote on a field trip. That might be different.
It has to be more fleshed out.
Yeah. So I think for us to have any action, any approval, we need to see a field trip.
Okay. And I didn't know, I didn't know the order. I knew that you didn't know about the capstone. So I was working very closely, yea and nay, with a tour person in the city to, for that person to develop my vision. And I can certainly firm that up and present the, a concrete field trip.
I think it's a great precursor, but I just don't know that there's board action in Boston. That's, that's actually operational. I see a couple hands. So Mrs. Ritchie, and then I'll go down the line. You're on around.
And I just wanted to comment, the, the New York capstone trip sounds fantastic. My only question, I don't know if we want to get, it is about the trip itself. You said two teams would go each day, but then you're breaking into different groups. So are each team then broken into the humanities and the science and math?
Correct. So you wouldn't necessarily, like the red team wouldn't necessarily go, go to one menu.
Right. So the red team can choose between all those alternatives?
Or whatever. We end up coming up with-
I, I think it sounds great, but I'm not sure it should be at the expense of the Boston trip. That's a conversation we need to have.
Right. And I'm just, I've been before you many times and you know that I am a student advocate. And I think that I have a really good handle on the social emotional needs and things that are detrimental and things that advance our students socially and emotionally, as well as academically. And I have a lot of trouble in knowing this trip intimately, both attending and waiting for the, the other shoe to drop. When I wasn't able to attend, though it never really, isn't that bad. But I, you know, I worry every single minute. I have a lot of trouble promoting a trip that stu, in which students are not engaged and that I see the bigger picture and the, that, that there's not a lot of value added to today's youth. And it would, I would do it, of course, but it would, well, maybe not, of course, but it would trouble me greatly to put forward something that doesn't, that I don't believe in for our students.
So I'm going to struggle with my questions a little bit because it's your job to run the school, not mine. And if I pick apart the presentation, then I say, well, can we just change the roommate selection process? Or do we need to say to the students, you know what, sometimes it's hard to see the value of something you're seeing today. You may not understand it later. So I will offer those as the thoughts of this individual board member to your thinking process.
Okay.
Mr. Burke?
I think my colleague here has some very creative ideas that may bear merit in looking at. I, it's an overall matter. I mean, I'm very distressed and I'm very saddened to hear about the state of social emotional learning, and not just in your building, I mean everywhere. A few weeks ago, we've approved more psychologists in the elementary schools. And I think at some point, we have to have a conversation about what, you know, what is going on with our children? And what is going on that they're coming to school and they're not treating each other with necessary respect and kindness? You don't have to be everybody's best friend. But if there are these issues, it sounds like they're just not, or a portion are not treating each other well. And I hope that where that behavior is identified, that it is addressed. And so it doesn't come to a point where we're at canceling trips. Or do we, are, you know, is some board in six years looking at canceling the prom because not enough people are being nice to each other? So I think it's a, a big question. I think we have to have, you know, parents involved. And we have to make sure that we are identifying these individuals and these students and dealing with them at that level. And not just canceling programs because they may threaten social emotional health.
That's only one part of it. I think that the academics and access to knowledge and access and ability to research and the skills that students have developed through our technology program as well as our rigorous academic curriculum have, have changed the nature of learning and have changed the nature of a student. So I'm not saying that, oh my goodness, we have so- So I'm not saying that, oh my goodness, we have so many students that are suffering with depression, anxiety because of the trip. But that certainly enters into it for some of our students, not for all of our students. But for me, the biggest heartbreak when I was walking the Freedom Trail and I'm like, you could show me Paul Revere's house a million times and every time I'm like, whoa. And the kids were like watching the guy who was getting spare change for wrapping. And I'm trying to like grab him back, but look, this is the real thing, the real Paul Revere. But kids don't need that. They have access to so much information that I think unless they make that connection, we can't make connections. It's like when you make a plan for your kids, unless they buy in, it's not really gonna go anywhere. Unless they can make that connection and say, this is important to me and I'm gonna follow through with it. So I don't want you to leave here thinking that our kids are really, you know, we have to cancel a trip because of that impact. That is one of the factors that go into it, that social dilemma that middle school students face of, who am I? Where do I fit in and why has everybody got it better than me? And that is something that I have to consider as I watch the trip unfold. They're not unkind to each other all the time. Right now, we're working on empathy in our flex classes. And people hear the message. Kids can quote, they understand what that means now. And I think that we do figure out those factors and those individuals every single day. I'd say that's what the most of my day is spent doing.
Thank you. Just following up on that, I heard the issues. I had a couple of questions. I really wanted more information. I heard my colleagues. And the question I had was in terms of the selection and the anxiety around the rooms. I mean, you know, to the point where we could just alphabetize and you're going and there it is, there's no choice. And what concerned me in this capstone project going forward is I know we have a educational theme around whether it's humanities or history or arts, but people could certainly gravitate into separate cohorts there. And again, you're having a selection process, which it's not as specific.
Let me just interrupt you for a minute. Students have to commit to their topic, their, now, at the end of seventh grade.
I got that.
So they can't say, oh, but my friend is doing this.
But they, of course, they still could make that choice just at a separate time for a different...
Except that they've already been working on this. It's not something brand new.
So I think, let's wait till we hear the real...
I might have more information on that, I guess was the question. And then, you know, to Mr. Burke's point, I mean, the social emotional, I know is something we're certainly committed to and that we're spending a lot of time in looking at. And everyone hears it's getting worse, which is a big concern. Which is a bigger question than now, but...
I don't, I don't think it's getting worse. I think that students are aware now, aware that there are supports, aware that if they're struggling with something, they have a support system and aware that it's okay to talk about things that they see and things that they're feeling in, within school, appropriately, you know, school-related. But I think that, and, and they see other students struggling all over the internet, all over social media, all over everything. So it's very much in the forefront and those conversations are very much in the forefront.
So is it the same occurrence? It's just a different rate of diagnosis or acceptance?
I don't, I don't know that. I don't have an answer for that.
Mrs. Stein. So logistically for the eighth grade, can you just go over timing? You would do a colonial day around...
When that, when is curricularly appropriate?
What time of the year is that?
Later on in the fall.
And so for the capstone, you're thinking in the fall?
Early.
Early in the fall. Perhaps given, I mean, there's so much to Dr. Landon's point, your point. There's so much around here for them to experience. Perhaps it's more than a one day to New York. Maybe it's, you know, making it, because I think losing Boston is going, it, there is tradition, there, it is sort of a culminating experience for some eighth graders. You know, last year you came to us and made it more robust. You wanted a second night. And now we're saying we're getting rid of it, which I'm okay with if it's replaced with something that is better, right? Better academically for the kids, less stress. But eighth graders do wanna get out of the building and spread their wings a little. And so perhaps you look at something that's a more robust program, not overnight, but maybe it's three different visits over each semester or whatever to New York so they can really go deep in something.
Exactly. And that would, exactly. And that's exactly what I think, that the second trip, the second part, would happen as they're further along in their pursuit.
So I think, I think we need more on capstone to understand it. I think as a board, we need to recognize we don't support these trips with district funds. So our ability, to Mrs. Ritchie's point, is to approve a plan, not necessarily to say you have to do, you have to make this plan better. We approve whatever plan you put in front of us. I think we're situated, let's give a little plug for Connecticut here. We could use it, in between Boston and New York. So it is, and sterbility, you know, like we have Mystic, we have so many things that kids should access that there might be a new grade plan. And because we've done X for so many years, doesn't mean it's bad, but it also doesn't mean it's great. So let's, if there's a new plan, let's look at a full new plan so we can improve it. A little concerning, if students are asking, why are we here? Then we're not doing something right. I don't know what it is, I'm not an educator. But if they're asking, why are we here? And they don't understand why they're here and we're taking them away from the classroom, then either, I'm not putting this on teachers. Teachers need to work harder to make connections or we need to make connections in a new way for students to pick it up. So I don't think there's action for the board this evening. I think that if you have a new proposal, bring us that. To Mrs. Stein's point, it may be that if capstoning, capstone's a culminating project, we may wanna look at whatever the new project is, or revamped Boston and New York in the spring, if it's a culminating experience. Or maybe it informs in the fall, that's an educational decision. But I don't think there's, I don't think there's action for the board tonight. But if you, if you need action and you need it approved, bring, come back.
We'll come back with a full field request. Can I, I just want to address Mr. Burke for a moment because I understand where you're coming from. I think these prob, many, many of the problems the kids face today, they faced years ago, but they were pushed aside. People would, people would say, well, the family can deal with it, the church can deal with it, the community can deal with it. It just doesn't work that way anymore. I think we've come to a point where there's a greater sensitivity. We see what's happening with, you can see it in the paper every day, with suicides among youngsters. You see the opioid epidemic. You see all of the different kinds of things that are affecting youth today. And people say, where can we turn? And there's really only one place. And that is, not only one place, but there's one place where we have a captive, where there is a captive audience among kids all the time. And that place is school. And if school, and we're very fortunate in this community that we have the resources, that we can address those kinds of things in a very positive way. And, you know, I think, there's no other, there are other places, but there's no better place than schools to deal with these. So it's not that it's different. I mean, you know, it is in the sense that it's more of a crisis. It was buried for years before this and it was a different world with none of the social media, none of the kinds of communications that take place now. But it's here and we have to face it. And I think that one of the best places to address these are the schools. That's why the request for psychologists. That's why there's concern about how kids treat one another on trips and how we can get them to work better together. So, you know, I wouldn't worry about it, but it's, but it's something that we address.
Well, so I think, I think what's clear is, you know, we also have statutory obligations that we need to deal with it. But if I, if I hear what you're both saying, school is a great place to deal with it. School is a place we must deal with it. But there's also a hope that we could partner with the community the more we identify it, to ask all stakeholders to acknowledge it, which didn't always happen in the past, and kind of help us because this is the community our kids are being raised in. So, and that's not to say our community isn't, but the more we can, the better outcomes we probably will have.
I just want to thank the administration for taking the children into consideration and putting them first and asking why. And I think that's what you've done with these two trips and I want to thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So we will move on to discussion and possible action of elementary parent conference days for 2019-2020 school year. Dr. De Silva, my favorite topic.
Okay, so as you know, the elementary school year is divided in trimesters. So we do have parent, parent teacher conferences twice a year. We last year actually increased the spring conferences by a day, you may remember, as we did not want them to be recommended. We wanted to offer and have the ability to offer a conference for every parent and every student. And so there's not much that's exciting, other than the year being divided up and us selecting the days.
Just asking about the spring conferences. So you're, you're finding there's good feedback that parents are happy to do the second conference and you're wanting to continue that going forward?
Yes, we would not, we value the opportunity to bring the progress report that parents receive just prior to the conference to life. It's a standards-based report card and I don't know that families walk away with all of the color that they might want in terms of goals for their children. So I do believe that families benefit from them. Not every parent wants the conference, but most of them, most of them do sign up. And now they have the time and wish to do that.
It was my understanding that it was not optional.
That's correct. It's, well, we can't force it. In other words, the spring conference in the past was optional because there were really only three days. We didn't even have the time slots. So we ask all of our parents to sign up for a conference. That does not mean that all of them will participate.
I didn't understand, I didn't realize there was flexibility. I thought it was mandatory.
Oh, yes, when parents are involved, there's always flexibility. They don't have to attend. I wish we could make them all attend, but unfortunately not. And sometimes parents may have just met with a teacher because of a PPT or they may have met with them for another reason and don't feel the need to have that session.
So do you, so you still feel you need the four days even though some are opting out?
Absolutely, 100%, yeah.
Mrs. McCallum.
Picking up on the same idea though, it sounded, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the need for that interaction, which is valuable, is because of the way the assessment is, the report card, for lack of a better word, is presented. I mean, could you achieve more of a goal if you enhanced the report card and therefore giving more color, teacher comments? Would require a different level of work? That you wouldn't need as many parents coming in because they read a page on their child?
I would suggest that regardless of the way the report card is written, that we need to have face-to-face contact, contact, contact with parents to discuss a child's progress. And twice a year is okay. If it was up to me, I'd have more time. I think that our parents want that for the most part and deserve that. They deserve a conference with their teacher and hearing the child's progress to date and what their goals are. So 100%.
Mrs. McKinnon.
I'll just say, I went to a lot of those and they're valuable. But ELP, is there still a reason why ELP needs to miss one of the days completely? And they, I know you're doing early dismissal, which I thought was for dismissal reasons, but there's still one day where they don't have school. If we could take a look at that.
I can certainly take a look at that. I remember that Laura believed that that was necessary, perhaps to get them all in, but I'll double check.
Yeah, so the conference week is four days. And so Monday's a normal school day. Tuesday, ELP follows early dismissal. Wednesday, ELP follows early dismissal. Thursday is an early dismissal day and ELP has no school. Friday is early dismissal and ELP by definition has no school. So I don't understand why there's no school on the Thursday, but...
I'll circle back with you on that.
Okay, so any other questions on these? Other than my intense desire to have different times in the middle of the afternoon and the morning. But I know we'll talk about that more once our calendar's not set.
For sure, I think that's part of the negotiation piece and having teachers' access. Our teachers are very willing to meet with teachers, parents and accommodate. And I hope that there isn't a parent that doesn't have the opportunity to meet with a teacher because of the schedule. I would be hopeful that that wasn't happening, but certainly it's something to consider.
Through three children, I have had very accommodating teachers, so. May I have a motion to approve the elementary conference days for 2019-2020 school year? Mr. Burke, so moves. Mr. Dine, seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all. Mr. Feeney, you're up.
Hey. Sorry.
The proposed adjustment to and possible action on approved 2019-2020 Board of Education budget.
So as you recall, back in February 13th, the Board of Education approved of the recommended budget with an increase of 2.61%. Since then, and there is an attached memo from Fitzpatrick, Brown and Brown Insurance Company, that's giving us an update regarding our health insurance that currently resides with Connecticut Care. We are originally going off of a, our claims period that ended leading up to December. And since then, thankfully, we've had some positive months that we're able to drop off, some high-cost months as well. The result of that has our health insurance decreasing from the percentage increase that we originally had put into the budget down to a 6%. And a 6% would equate to 500, a decrease of $568,000 and some change. So we are here today for you to, recommending for you to make an adjustment to the Board of Education's proposed budget by the amount of $568,694, which would change the percentage increase from a 2.61% increase to a 2.03% increase.
You got a question?
I just have a point of order. It's not a question, our, we've already voted on our budget. It now lies in the hands of the Board of Finance. So I'm not sure we can technically vote to reduce our budget. I think we would have to vote to recommend that the Board of Finance make that adjustment.
So we will vote for issuance of a memo to the Board of, to the Board of Finance that we are aware that our budget can now be at two, you know, like, we will vote issuance of a memo to the Board of Finance that we, we have a change in our budget.
And that they make the adjustment.
Yeah, they have to make the adjustment.
That we can't make the adjustment.
But bravo. Although, although they have also not voted on the budget, we have handed it over to them.
There was a point a couple of years ago that we did make a change to the Board of Education's recommended budget. As you recall, we zeroed out the excess cost funds and then we ended up adding the excess cost funds in. And that had occurred at the board level and then we communicated that as well to the Board of Finance and all of the other committees.
I think they'll be quite pleased to accept it and if procedurally they feel the need to change anything that we've done, they'll let us know. But I have to think that the town, the taxpayers, the Board of Finance, the RTM will be happy with this change. Mr. Maroney, is that a question? So may I have a motion to issue a memo to the Board of Finance to modify the 2019-2020 Board of Education budget to an increase year-over-year of 2.03% with a change of $568,694? Mr. Maroney gets it. Mrs. Ritchie, seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you for watching that number closely. I know I heckled you every single meeting wanting to know about it. So I appreciate it and tell our brokers, thanks. So we will move on to the discussion of the approved 2019-2025 Board of Education capital six-year and possible action. Dr. Landon and Mr. Feeney.
When we attended our last meeting with the Board of Finance, it was suggested that the Board of Education look at its capital project.
Can you press your button? I can't hear you. That's what this one's in the audience.
When we last met with the Board of Finance, there was an indication by a member or members of the Board of Finance that we ought to look at our capital projects and bring them, and bring forward those which we believe we would like to have done sooner rather than later. And on, and on our Saturday tour of the buildings, just a week ago or so, again, a member of the Board of Finance members suggested we do it, we do the same thing. So Ms. Feeney has put together a listing of projects that, some of which are grant-funded and others which are not. But my suggestion is, since the offer has been made, bonding rates are low, we have no idea what the future will hold in terms of state support for capital projects, I would let Ms. Feeney talk to the issues and Mr. Lynch is here tonight also.
So I did hand out a memo that was left on your desk as well. If I could, and I think some of the suggestions that we had received on feedback were very positive in terms of as we go forward, for example, outline exactly which projects are grant-eligible. And obviously, this is coming around because the state of Connecticut right now is talking about impacting the formulas for school construction and reimbursement, in particular to communities such as Darien, where if the legislature, if the legislation goes through, then there's a possibility that we would get nothing for any of the school construction funds. So what I've done on the memo is basically highlight some of the grants that are state-funded. The positive and the negative is that we have a correct... The positive and the negative is that we have correctly put them in the correct categories as when we're looking at the capital plan going out. So all of the roof replacement projects are in the appropriate category. So if we were to move those to go forward into the 1920 category, then grant funding would not be available to us. And even though some of them are in the 1996 addition, they go as to when the grant funds were actually closed out. And that's why that grant fund was closed out, if you look at the Royal. And that's why the funding would be available on 2020-21. The next category, we thought would be important to point out as well, are the energy-efficient programs. And there are grant fundings through Eversource. And right now, those grants are not expected to sunset. It could change in the future, but we wanted to highlight some of those projects that are down below that could basically change from a three to, or a two to a one, or we could basically speed up some of those projects in the outlying years from 2020-21 to 1920.
Board of Questions? Mrs. Ritchie?
So just to summarize this, how many projects could we accelerate to right now and get grant funding for right now? So in other words, the offer that the Board of Finance made was wonderful. But are there significant projects that we can accelerate and get grant funding for now?
For grant funding, if you're looking at the state of Connecticut, the one that would jump out right now would be the traffic control security booth for $150,000, which still has information from the administration in order to present to you. The other ones would basically be the Eversource funds. Those are not expected to go away, so those will be in the outlying years. And you could move any of those up closer if you felt the need to.
So Michael, just to be clear, the bottom box is, take instance, the bottom box is strictly grants through Eversource, having nothing to do with the state?
Correct.
And then on the security booth for $150,000, which is an estimate, we have more information coming. Is that something that right now would go through the normal process, which is a June 30th cutoff?
That one is not necessarily for the reimbursement from the state of Connecticut, but that's a separate security grant that we get reimbursement for. The deadline for application for that, Mike, do you recall? Is it the deadline for the reimbursement to the state of Connecticut for the security booth?
Those deadlines have ended up being November 1st.
November 1st.
And they've had four cycles, and they...
So there could also be another cycle in next November as well?
Other board questions?
Mr. Lynch, is there anything on here that you feel would need to be moved up for any reason other than a financial interest? Like, there's an urgency to any of these projects that needs to be done?
Not that are on this list, no. No.
Or part of the rest of the capital. What I had did, just to clarify, so I had looked at the grant funding so we could take advantage of that. But I'm not sure, I think the next question to Mike would be, is there anything else on the capital that's not necessarily grant-funded that you would want to speed up a little bit faster to be included?
I think if it was going to, if things were going to be moved up, I would move up some of the engineering that would have to go into, you know, the conversion of a heating system from steam to hot water. Because that involves a tremendous amount of engineering to do it right. You've got to change all the piping. You've got to change all your heating equipment in every space that has steam heat in it. And you've got to change every piece of piping and the boilers in the boiler rooms. That's a project mentioned for a couple of buildings here. If I was really going to think of moving something up, I would take Hindley School and move that up because those boilers are already running on gas. So Eversource will give us money for that. They won't give us money at the schools that don't run on gas. And we could combine that with electric, you know, lighting upgrades, to LED lights. And when you combine two different types of energy conservation, instead of getting like 10%, they give you like 35 or 45%. They really increase the percentage when they see you're doing a more well-rounded project. So, you know, having an extra minute to think about it, I would say that Hindley, changing that would be what I would do. The other ones, I would suggest, you know, study. Bring on an engineering firm, mechanical engineering firm, to do some of the in-depth work here to firm up the prices going forward. You know, the Eversource grant comes, they haven't taken that away yet. They still have those energy incentive programs going. And the other thing with the security grant is, when the grant cycle starts, you give them an application, you don't have to have already spent the money. The Eversource grants, you have to have already spent the money. But these, they'll give you, you know, a guarantee of the money upfront. And then it's like matching funds.
Mr. Brown?
Ms. Feeny, when we say the Eversource grants, I heard there's a tailing issue. Is that 100% or are these like some 20%? Is there a scale? Is that captured in here in any way?
It is not captured in here, but they're all, each, it's going to be each individual project, and it's a scale. It's not 100%. And some of them would basically be a return on your investment after a certain period of time.
When we did the LED lighting, it came out to about 19 or 20%. When we did the retrocommissioning, it was closer to about 25%. So they look at your project and then tell you what, if any, grant you're eligible for.
So these numbers, they're going to send us a check for all of it tomorrow?
No, sir.
Dr. Landon?
I would just like to know why we wouldn't go with all the projects listed for 2020-2021. It's almost upon us. And next year, this coming year is 1920. If we're going to push stuff up and ask to have it funded, and there's a possibility that we could do it now, why wouldn't we take everything that's listed in 2021 and see if we can get it approved now?
Well, so could I ask this? I heard it from two Board of Finance members, but I did not hear this message from their chair. Not saying that the chair is not in favor of it. But is the board okay if maybe we engage in a conversation? If I engage with maybe F and B on the RTM, Board of Finance, and lay it out for them and let them discuss the feasibility? We've moved up, if I'm hearing Mr. Lynch. We've presented all our urgent projects in a timely, reasonable, financially responsible way. But if they feel the need, knowing the town's financial health, to move anything up, and Mr. Lynch is in agreement, and F and B thinks they understand it, that might be a better way. Because this is really moving up. This isn't us saying, we as a board know this needs to be done in our school. Mrs. Ritchie?
I don't have an issue with that. My concern is that we don't have a facilities plan in place, and those projects are primarily Royal. So I want to make sure it ties into whatever plan. And I don't want to be putting money into a school if a year or two down the road, we're going to decide to do something different and more major at that school. So I think that we have to be thoughtful that there needs to be a facilities plan. And Royal seems to be the 2021 school with four projects.
We've got our master plan, the six-year capital plan, and then the building survey. We might not have decided what we're doing at Royal or not, and that might be part of the conversation.
Do you remember a couple of years ago when we gave the five-year plan? Mr. Feeny and I had presented it with different colors?
Yes.
Okay, the yellow, I think, were items that were in the building condition survey that we were transferring over to the capital plan that could stand alone. And there were other ones that were in gray.
Yes.
And they had a different meaning behind them. But, you know, Mrs. Ritchie's correct. You would do these projects when you did an addition on the building and got rid of the portables. But these are in there, if you're not going to do that, you still are going to have to know that this mechanical work is going to need to be done.
So then the question is to go back to the Board of Finance with, is the board saying, we're satisfied with the capital plan? And we're not looking for you to look at anything else to bond? Because we need to solidify our plan going forward with buildings? Or do you want to engage in that conversation with them, with Mr. Lynch present, to kind of say, well, you could do this. And if there's anything that's board actionable, bring it back first? I've only heard two Board of Finance members say this, so that's kind of my hesitancy. I haven't gotten a directive from the Board of Finance to do this. But also, I need to know whether you want to even engage in this conversation. Mrs. McCallum?
I would say we need to make sure the Board of Finance, because it's all hinging on the Board of Finance agreeing. And if they do so, I think that's a worthwhile absolutely. But I think we've put the cart before the horse a little bit. So let's get clarification from the Board of Finance, and then we can go back to these projects. May I just ask specifically on Ox Ridge? Why, given the, you know, we're sort of down the road on Ox Ridge a little bit. Ox Ridge is appearing in one of the grant-eligible. Would we still move forward with that? Or that would be just part of the renovation?
Well, one part of the, one part of the options was that the 1996 addition would be reused.
Correct, okay.
And that's where this roof and the solar panels are. That's the 1996 addition. Now, I think since this time, I think the position has been sort of solidified that the 1996 addition will not be part of the new construction. But, you know, my capital plan starts in front of you in October.
Right.
So that's why that's still in there.
I think it's on there because it's a grant-eligible project.
It's grant-eligible, yeah.
Right, right, right.
Mrs. McKinnon?
So I think it is worthwhile having a conversation with the Board of Finance, but I don't think this memo is what we would provide. I think we need to decide what from this memo you would go and take. So it sounds like you would take Hindley and have that conversation with them. I would argue you would not take the traffic control security booth, because I don't think we have, you know, agreed to that as a board. I would also, I agree with Ms. Ritchie. I don't think you could identify that Royal, if you did an addition, this is what we would do. But I think we're still talking about what exactly an addition may or may not look like based on enrollment and facilities. So I think we need to clean this up and talk about what's really...
So to be, to Ms. Ritchie's point, then, what we need to do, know from Mr. Lynch's, what is outside of any physical plant changes? Is there anything on here? Or this all is physical plant changes, everything listed here?
No, the, I mean, just as an example, the heating system at Hindley and Royal and Ox Ridge, getting, I mean, in Holmes, getting changed from steam to hot water. That's in, and to put powered ventilation in the original buildings. That's in every one of these. Okay, for Royal, you see there's two items there for upgrading the 1950s addition. One of the discussions is, those are the four first-grade classrooms. When we eliminate the portables, do we want to eliminate that whole addition and build something new? Well, if the answer is yes, then you're not going to be spending that $879,000 plus $548 on, you know, putting lipstick on a pig. You're going to be carrying it down and building something new, so...
So the answer might be to the Board of Finance is, and I'm not looking a gift horse in the mouth, either we identify projects and very specifically, because we know that there's not going to be changes, and we bring that forward, or we say, no, we've brought you a thoughtful plan. And every chance we have to capture bonding rates or grants, we take into account, and you've already seen that capital plan. So maybe if the administration could come back with very specific recommendations, if they see any projects, they would choose, rather than this whole menu? Because it sounds to me like, quite frankly, to keep saying your name, I'm sorry, to Mrs. Ritchie's point, Royal isn't really viable for this.
It's sort of in play right now for a possible renovation.
Maybe, so I need to know if there's anything you want to accelerate or not? You got anything, or you want to think about it?
Yeah, if we could think about it. Again, the purpose was more or less to make sure that, and to let you know, that there is nothing right now that we could speed up regarding getting reimbursement from the state of Connecticut for construction. For example, all of our roofing-type things. And then the other, the other one was to basically show, sure, there are other grants that are out there, in particular from Eversource, and we wanted to highlight that. But our next step could basically be, we can narrow it down, exactly what Mike's saying, and we can run some further analysis and come back before you...
Because then we could have real conversations with them about what we want and why it didn't come forward, right? If we want it, why it didn't come forward. Mr. Maroney?
For me, I would also ask them of what they're expecting us to bring forward. I mean, to take Royal or Holmes additions, is that something they're looking for us to expedite quicker? I mean, that's a bigger conversation. But to me, there's no context here, there's no timeline here. It's just two informal discussions, and it feels like we're trying to action said informal discussions. And I think we need to have a bigger picture to understand where we're going with this.
So how about this? You come back with an recommendation. I will clarify with Chairman Zagratzky what the intent of those informal conversations were, if there was any, or whether they were just great ideas. And then we can reconvene on this idea.
So no motion, you're going to...
No motion at this point. Just a little bit of a work order for everybody.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Yep.
Just thank you, Mr. Lynch. Discussion and possible action on the proposed capital project storage and facility at Darien High School. Dr. Landon?
As you know, when, several years ago, there was a request to do away with the various storage boxes and create it with a single storage shed on the high school property. And then, of course, the cafeteria project took place, and Jill, you run that committee. So what I tried to do here with Mike's help and Mike's help is describe what happened to the duct work that was discovered beneath the period where the, the area where the expansion was taking place that forced us to have a smaller space than was possible to house the proposed storage shed. So my suggestion is that we not continue to ask for the financing for that storage shed and to return the money to the town with the understanding that if, at some future point, we can find a place where we can relocate that storage shed, which was used for athletic and maintenance equipment, we would come back and with a request to have that funded.
Comments, questions? Mrs. McKinnon?
So, yes, I was on that committee. And as I was aware that there were some, there was some look by the administration in conjunction with the architects to see what could be done. I'm not totally sure what happened with that work, because it wasn't really in the scope of my committee. But I was aware it was happening. So, and I never, it didn't come back to the board as sort of what the results were. So my request at this stage would be not to reject the funding, but to send this down to the facilities subcommittee and ask them to take a look at, I think, ask them to take a look at what happened, number one. Number two, I think the need still exists, if indeed there's a need. What we were led to understand was that there's equipment that doesn't fit in the current containers, that the containers themselves are disorganized and that, clearly, that they're an eyesore. And so my impression is that the need still exists. So I think the appropriate next step is to send it to facilities and say, what are the options? And then have them come back to the board with either some options and arguably in consult with the architects, who worked both on the cafeteria and at least the initial idea for the...
Other board comments, questions?
I would just ask that, sort of pigging back on Jill's comments, can we get an inventory of what is actually in need of being stored, including stuff under the bleachers, all of that? My understanding is some of it may be youth sports-related versus high school-related. And I think we need to know exactly what we're talking about and understand what's our responsibility to store.
Mrs. McCallum? I would support the motion that, or the idea that Jill has. But I just wanted to clarify, because not contained in this memo is, do we still feel we need a storage for these items? If you're saying we still need storage, then I think we move it to facilities. If you're saying we don't need storage, that's a different, if the opinion of the administration has changed, that's a different conversation. But I just wanted to clarify that.
So can we, can I tweak that before you answer? Because I think it, or add to it, maybe?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
The question, I think, for the board is, do we have a need? And if we have a need, and it's not the project we presented, do we kick it down to facilities? Or do we go back to the town and say, you've issued authorization for bonding? That project is no longer viable. We'd like to earmark that we may be coming back with you a new project, but what we presented to you is not viable. And so do you want to pull back your authorization? I'm actually comfortable with whatever the board says. First, hearing the need, and then deciding the appropriate process, we think, around this table. First, hearing the need, and then deciding the appropriate process, we think, around this table.
Oh, I just want to clarify, I think we heard the need, I just want to say, does the administration feel differently now? Because we definitely heard a need, so I just want to clarify, yeah, yeah.
We heard a need, does the administration feel differently?
Yeah, that's why we, right.
Mike?
So the issue now is the square footage of what we were looking to build on that location is, we can't, we can't build the square footage.
Oh, yeah, I think we all are in agreement on that, but do you still have a need for this stuff?
What was?
We do, we, we do still have the, the need for the things.
Okay.
And then the question would be, do we continue to use the, um, the, the containers, right? And, uh, if, you know, we think that it's, um, you know, these aren't aesthetically pleasing, but if others think that they're aesthetically pleasing, there could be a difference of opinion regarding that. And then also, we'd have to find another location for it.
Yes.
And the high school is very limited in
Right.
where it could actually go.
Which is, can, so if we potentially move it to the facilities committee, can that be part of the process that we reassess the location of, we, we, clearly there's a need. We approved this as a capital project, so we saw the need a year ago. So perhaps we can reassess the location and find another spot to put. If, if it cannot be placed where we intended it to be placed, can the shed or storage facility be placed somewhere else?
Or is it more than one?
Or is it now multiple? More functional, because the other issue was the ones we were using were not functional.
And, and within the budget allocation that we went forward with, I guess, does changing the position make it more or less expensive?
And is it all our stuff, or is it other people's stuff? That's Mrs. Stein's point.
Whose is it, if it's ours, we have to.
To Katie's point, the inventory should dictate the size, and then determine if it's one or two, depending on where.
So I looked up a motion, because I was, had time while my kid was swimming today. You can actually commit this. I moved, commit this to the facilities subcommittee, to consider the question, to ask them to work with an architect, and we can actually tell them when the, ask them when to report back.
So you're, if we're working with an architect, we're also assigning dollars?
Well, we have dollars.
No, no, we have bonding authorization for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I, I just want to be clear that, like, if you're going to put work with an architect in the motion,
All right, well, let's assign it to facilities.
Yeah, you may, you may not want it. Just take out, maybe take out the architect part first.
Jill is making a motion. She has a motion on the floor.
Which is to the facilities subcommittee.
If I'm not mistaken, there's no place on high school grounds to place that. Or am I wrong? Mike, is there a place?
So the motion's on the table.
That was the only place, right?
So let's, we're having too many conversations. Jill, make the motion, then we can have the conversation.
The question of the stored, what are we calling it, storage facility?
The proposed storage facility project.
To the facilities committee.
To the facilities.
Okay, now, the question on the table is, is there anywhere, because the mo, the motion's been made, so we can.
I'm going to second that motion.
Deb will second it. Now we can have a conversation on it. Dr. Landon has asked, is there anywhere else that we think this shed can fit?
And that would be the charge.
And there may be further conversation to be had in facilities about it, but he has a question on the table.
Okay, so Mike has been involved with this project for the very beginning. He was involved with the duct work change. He was involved in, in observing what was done and what was possible. And I believe, Mike, there's no other place you know of where we can place that, a shed of that size on the limited space we have available at the high school.
Could I just expand on that? So even if we remove the existing storage facilities, there's nowhere else to put a shed? So just, and then that's.
That's correct. We, we moved the Connex boxes to underneath the, um, the scoreboard. And we can't put a permanent structure there, because that's too close to the property line, and there's a zoning, right, uh, rule on how far we can go to the property line for the high school with a permanent structure. The original plan was to build a structure that would house everything in those Connex boxes, but not the one down by the baseball field, because that would be impractical to have the baseball team. So you'd still have a Connex box on the property.
Baseball, yeah.
For the baseball team, because they're so far away from where you would be located. But it was also supposed to be central storage for all the big poles that are on the oval field. The way the line, the, the electric line, even when it was put back in the ground to tie it into the existing catch basins, um, you make the new storage building about a thousand square feet, and you have about a thousand thirty-six square feet of Connex boxes stuffed. So you're not going to be able to make something big enough to put all the poles in, which, the original goal of the storage facility was to have a covered place for the poles on the center oval fields when they were not in use.
And the golf cart, correct?
And the golf carts. And then we said, okay, let's add the Connex boxes in. So you're, you're looking at really cutting down to a fraction of what you were hoping to be able to build.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Um, just for the, for the conversation, um, when you say permanent and structure, what is permanent, and what is the structure?
Uh, something with a footing.
Okay. Impermanent?
Uh, it's the same thing. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a built building. A Connex box is not considered a permanent structure, because you can easily move it.
So I know at one point, so I guess what you're saying is there's nowhere else you think you can build, add on, and it sounds like it's the poles, you can't do half.
I was going to say, the facilities committee could look at building several, you know, smaller structures that architecturally matched the pavilion or the high school building. But that would be something the facilities committee would come back to you with a recommendation, yea or nay.
But the, one of the goals are these poles, and so these poles would not fit into any smaller structures?
Well, the poles plus everything in the Connex boxes, plus the two, or now it's three golf carts.
Okay, so it's a combination of everything?
Yeah, yes, sir, I mean, ma'am.
So, if it's a combination, well, no, so it sounds like what we need to do is, be a reflection, what were the goals? What were the goals, and can the property satisfy those goals? And if facilities would like to do that and then come back to us before we release, we could do it that way. Or if what we're hearing is we can, the board can decide, there's a motion on the table about that. To Mrs. Stein's question, are we aware that there's youth, anything other than high school stuff in our current storage? Not the Connex boxes, because we could move that. But like, under the bleachers, under the stairs, is that all high school stuff? Or is that youth thing?
I think there's some youth sports.
Okay.
If we remove the youth sports from those locations, would that give us more storage for our own?
For our poles, and then we could build smaller structures.
Everything that was in youth sports, that was under the bleachers, they had in, if you remember when the dish was put on the cafeteria, they had a small Connex box on the corner of the parking lot. That had all the youth sports stuff. So they could be handing stuff out for the summer and getting stuff back in from the company that did the, uh, the reconditioning of the equipment. And they didn't even fill that box. So there is some youth sports under the bleachers, but it's not a lot of space.
Okay. And, and I hear that, let's send this down to facilities. I'm fine with that, I want to make sure facilities knows what it's doing, if that's the decision of the board. So, the, the, one of the goals, we're saying a facility is to remove outside of the baseball where it was impractical, all Connex boxes off of the property? Because the facilities committee has to know what to consider.
Isn't it to create proper storage for the equipment that we've invested in, that we, I mean, that's why we, you know.
But would that also be? The two hundred and fifty thousand.
But that would also be, would that, is that also, because one of the old goals was to remove those Connex boxes?
Yeah, because they were nice ones.
Because you could build a thousand small ones and still have more Connex boxes. So I, I just want to make sure if we send this to facilities, they know what they're talking about. And then I would urge facilities to meet as quickly as they could, only because this bonding line has been out for about two years, and I do think at some point we owe an answer back to the town.
All right, so we have the motion on the table, first and seconded.
Okay, so, are we ready to call for a vote? Are there any more questions? Okay, so can you read the motion again? Or Mrs. McCann?
The motion to commit the proposed storage facility project at Darien High School to the facilities committee.
For study.
For a study.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor. As you know. Um, so Mr. Maroney, no monkey on your back, but, thanks. Yeah, no monkey on your back either, Mr. Feeny and Mr. Lynch. All right, we will move on to, I, approach to future legislative proposals affecting schools and possible action, which is a board discussion, but Dr. Landon issued a memo on it.
Uh, yes, I did. Because, um, as you superintendent, I was somewhat concerned, um, about the way, that I, I did not think the board had, um, sufficient information as it was pressured to make a decision, um, on some of the education legislation. So I thought for the future, um, it could be handled in a more deliberative way. Um, since it's an education matter, my suggestion is that the procedures the board used is that superintendent schools and, and obviously superintendent staff take a look at the, and review the proposed legislation to see if there is a direct impact, um, on, um, on what we do here in Darien. Then present whatever recommendations come out of that review to the Board of Education, so that the board has the pros and cons of going one way or another in support or opposed, or in opposition to the legislation. Um, the board then could formalize a position, and then, in accordance with board policy, the board chair acts as the spokesperson, as the spokesperson on behalf of the board, um, at both the local and state levels. I just thought it would bring some order to the process and, and make it more deliberative, and give the board more of an opportunity to hear both sides of the issue, and, um, ask questions, and, and if necessary, have, have the administration bring back, um, more data for the board to consider it, and then the board could take a formal position.
Okay, there were several members who asked that this item be put on the agenda, just so I think we were clear, um, on how we proceeded. Is there anyone who wants to add anything? Mrs. Ritchie?
Um, I'll clarify on point number one. So will the superintendent of schools then go through all the current legislation and determine what legislation is appropriate? And, because there's tons of bills being, it seems like a lot of things are. Or is it going to be the board coming to you saying, here's legislation, we think we should take a look at that? So how's the process?
I, I think it's, as, as with anything else that involves the board and the superintendent, it's mutual, there's a back and forth. I mean, if the, if the superintendent feels this piece of legislation the board should deal with, or pieces of legislation, or if the board members feel there should be some, um, study of that legislation to see what position, um, would be good for Darien, then yes, you know, I, I think, um, it, it works both ways. And that doesn't mean every piece, it's not every piece of legislation that's coming out of, out of Hartford.
Talk about Styrofoam lunch trays.
Yeah, just stay on this first point. Thank you so much, because I think it's a great idea, and I do appreciate the board and the administration moving forward in this direction. But just on this first point, just to clarify, one, how is it that these, what was happening in Hartford comes to your attention? Could you just clarify for me, your source of information and how it comes to you? Two, what criteria will you use? And then, three, what would be the mechanism if we find information? I mean, there are so many bills, expelled students, school literacy curriculum, and Latino studies. I mean, there are a myriad of bills right now. So how are we going to look at that universe and go forward?
Well, first of all, those issues that are critical to all school districts, not, you know, not, not narrowly defined, um, pieces of legislation that affect the single community, are publicized, um, by the Connecticut Association of Public Schools superintendents. Um, and that organization, that's my organization, actually has someone who monitors all of the acts coming out of the Senate and the House, um, and to tell, and advises us as to which ones, um, have a potential to impact us, which don't, you know, which one need immediate, needs immediate, which ones need immediate action and others don't. The same is true of CAPE. CAPE also has a legislative type person who analyzes and informs boards of education of, of what's critical and what's not. Um, so for example, if, um, oh, I can't give an example, but, um, if it were, um, i- if we were required to provide education for, um, all youngsters from one through five, let us say, as a mandate, that would take, I think, an effort on the part of the superintendent to analyze that bill, not only from the educational perspective, but also from the practical perspective, as to whether we'd have the space to house such a program. And if not, then advise the board that, um, look, this is a great idea, um, but it's not practical for us, so therefore, for the following reasons, I think we should oppose it.
Okay, and then?
And then the board would discuss it, and the board would say, we'll find a way to provide it. And then the board takes a position that we're in support of that, and, and, and goes with it.
And then if there's legislation, I'm just going to pick one. The use of tires, recycled tires in playgrounds. Bill seven zero zero three.
Well, that, you know, that, that's a very interesting question. I think in that instance.
Just as an example, just theoretical, I mean, I don't need to talk about that one particularly.
I would provide the board with all the research, because there's research on both sides of that issue. There are some who say it has no impact, and there are others who say it adversely affects the, the health of, of those who play on those kinds of fields.
So I do think we have to remember.
I'm just trying to get the process down more than anything.
So I think we have to remember rules. It's our legislators' roles to follow legislation, right? Our role is to provide education to the students in Darien. There are some times where there are big bills. This season, there's been big bills on education. But tires, I think, has been introduced for the last five sessions. So the answer is, I think a lot of this, we are not going to deal with every bill. We, we have four representatives, who that's their job, right? So there, this session, we've had some high level ones. But I think if we start getting into, like, do we monitor every single bill of education? Like, that's why we have a CAPE, that's why we have Terry Wood, Matt Lumenthal, Bob Duff, Carlo Leone, that's why elections matter, you know, like, you can argue all those things. But I think if we all of a sudden charge ourselves with now being many legislators too, we're adding to already, I'd say, an amazing workload that these members do. So I think what you're saying is, how do we monitor all these bills? Is Elliot going to bring them all to us, or whoever's in the seat? Like, I don't even think we want our superintendent being a legislative assistant all day long. But there's some big, high level ones that both CAPE could do in their policy reports, CAPS could do in their own policy report. Or sometimes, I mean, this, this year, we've had bodies say, what do you think about this?
I guess what I'm getting, I agree that there's some high level, but I'm concerned is how is we, do we as a board define high level? Or is there a way which we can make it very clear as to, these are the bills we do want to make a statement on, and these that we don't? And how are we going to decide which is which?
Well, if I understand the superintendent's paper here, if he, you know, in his, uh, role as superintendent, in his discretion, informed by CAPE, informed by his superintendent counsel, feels that there is a piece of legislation coming down the pipe that has a particularly large impact, and he can communicate that, you know, to this, uh, to this board, I think it's a, it's a slippery slope if you try to elucidate a, a standard by which, you know, reflectively, we decide to comment. I think our superintendent is a source to point out something that is legislative concern, or, you know, or our representatives, certainly to the extent any one of us as members have the time and ability to sort through legislation, can always make a, a comment, send an email through our chair, which I think is the other point of this process memo, because I don't ascribe it to any particular issue, but a process memo that says, you know, superintendent's the watchdog, our chair is the, uh, you know, is the main communicator. And I think that memo just really sets it out somewhat, you know, clearly. I don't think it's, it's really hard to prescribe particular situations and particular standards to trigger acts. And I think that ties us up more than it frees us to do our job.
Mrs. McCann?
I, I think another way perhaps to, to speak to that question is, what are the various inputs? Right, so one is going to.
Right, so one is going to be emails to us from CAPE, one is going to be emails to the superintendent and his staff, so he's looking at that. And then I think any one of us as individuals may decide to pull up a bill that we are interested in, whether or not it was identified by CAPE or CAPS. So I think probably the only thing that we need to really clarify at this table is, if I as a board member decide that Senate Bill 1019AAC, school literacy, is important because of the literacy conversations we've been having at the table, then just the process would be, I would send that to you and you would then what?
If, so if I was, I haven't read that one, and I've read a lot, so if I was to receive that one, I would tell you at this point, I'd go to the superintendent and I'd say, this bill exists, a member has raised it, do you have concerns? Now, we can get an explanation or feedback, but also, you know, there's a process by which you can compel members on the agenda. But I think like any other question that sends through to the superintendent, we'd send through the superintendent for what are your thoughts? And if the superintendent says, yeah, this is one we've been watching, or no, I'm not worried about it, or yeah, let me bring it to the table with some examples of how we already do that, you know, I think it would be like any other question a member sends that goes directly through to the superintendent. Mrs. McCann.
I'm McNamara.
I'm so good on my...
I guess I'm still concerned that then we're ordering work based upon one board member's email to you, to the administration, if we're looking for a response.
I don't think it's ordering work any more than a typical question that comes through. And I definitely receive questions from, if the superintendent says, this is gonna take me 10 hours of reading through, then I think it's fair to go back to the member and say, what are the concerns? But just like you might send me a question and say, I don't understand X, and I send it through to the administration and they get back to you, I'm not sure that's ordering work unless we find, as a board, and I or whomever's sitting in this chair reports back, you're making our superintendent a legislative assistant, what are you doing? Because I think we need to be careful of doing the legislator's job for them. They have an inherent responsibility, because you also can send it to any of your representatives and say, I don't understand this bill. They actually have a staff to do this, that's their job.
Okay, so then if we get the information from our, if we go that route, then how do we decide if we as a board want to make a statement on it? I guess maybe that, then we're taking, following it down, but...
So I think you have to understand if you're acting as a board member or an individual, right? Because if you have an individual question on a bill, you don't bring it forward. But if you have something that you think affects our board work, I mean, you think you raise it like anything else, and lots of times, people come to me and say, what do you think about this? I mean, this item got on the agenda because people came to me and said, I've got a question, how do we do this? Because there was definitely, I think, some need for consensus on how we do this.
No, I agree. I think the whole process needs to be clarified, because I think we ran into hiccups. So we're trying to get ahead of it, which is why we're all talking about this right now. I guess I'm still not completely clear as to how we're gonna move forward and vote whether or not we wanna make a statement on it, whether or not we as individuals wanna make a, or vote on it, if we as individuals wanna do something.
Well, so here are my thoughts. The issue of regionalization, for example, became a real hot issue in the state, and both CAPE and CAPS had positions on it. So that was a rare case where everybody was affected and everybody had to think about what to do about it. Years ago, there was the graduation requirement legislation, which changed everything rather significantly for many, many, many districts throughout the state who probably couldn't even afford to put into place all of the new requirements of graduation. Now, in the case of graduation, I would say we probably wouldn't have to discuss whether we wanted to support the legislation, because in essence, in Darien, we basically were doing virtually everything that was required in the new graduation requirements. And generally speaking, I mean, it's rare that that board really has to discuss legislation unless it impacts the district directly. Regionalization, obviously, would affect the district. Graduation requirements affect the district. But if all of a sudden, for example, that's a terrible example, but under the federal law, you know, if you have 20 kids who speak a particular language, you have to provide a certain kind of program. Now, if they change that to 10, that might have an impact on us, then we'd better be discussing that and decide whether we wanna take a position, because it has a cost associated with it and space associated with it. But for the most part, I can't imagine, look, if the board gave me a task, or any superintendent tasked, said, you know, this is gonna take me two weeks in order to really delve into this and do it, I would go back as a superintendent to the board chair and say, if the board wants me to do this, then the board has to take an action as a whole. I can't act on the basis of one board member's request.
Absolutely, I think that's, we have to respect your time, or something the policy committee takes on as a subcommittee in trying to distill the information, so...
So I think, to part of your question, if the board wants to speak with all of their names on something, it's a board vote, the chair as the spokesperson can issue statements with... Sorry. I thought it was a fire alarm.
I know, that's what I thought, yeah.
Much happier, it's just her phone. The chairperson can issue statements on behalf of the board, but if we want everyone's name listed in their official capacity, then that is a vote of the board. And I think we had one situation where there was kind of a sense of the meeting, and to tell if I will just take votes now, so it's very clear what the board's position is. Our policy, and I did check with the attorney, I think Mrs. McCann, McNamara.
Just go with Ritchie.
Yeah. Mrs. Ritchie.
You're in a roll.
I don't think you asked me, but I'm just gonna look at you so I don't mess it up. To check with the attorney on that. And he said, yes, the chair of the board can issue statements, but if every member would like their name on it, then it needs to be a vote of the board, because members only act in their official capacity as a board of education member by virtue of vote. They don't act outside or any individual capacity in their elected office. So we can clarify that and we can do that a little better, I think, it would just make it more clear. But really, you know, I've checked with both former board chairs, this has not been an issue. This legislative season just kind of heightened it. So to Mr. Burke's point, maybe we don't wanna overprescribe, but I do think as legislation comes up, it's probably best to take a clear vote. If there's anything that's emergent, just like I do when it's emergent, I can act as spokesperson, or whoever's sitting in the chair can act as spokesperson. But for the best thing, if there's real issue with the board, we talk about it, we vote on it, and that's what stands. Does that clear, does that make it clear for everybody?
Okay, so if a board member has something that they'd like to discuss, they email you and then you'll go to the superintendent, like the one about school literacy, which I'm assuming would affect our district. How about artificial turf? Artificial turf?
Okay, but I do think, look, I think we can act as the legislature. And I think that we could, if there's a real concern, that's fine, but we also have to understand the bill process. And I was just as annoyed on regionalization when people said, let the conversation take place, but, you know, artificial turf hasn't been granted a public hearing. You can check online, you can see where the bill is and its process. And short of something having even a public hearing in committee, I'm not sure we need to be having conversation on artificial turf. You know, there was one that like beer couldn't be made and sold in the same place, it died immediately, like the craziness of it became apparent. So I just don't wanna, I don't wanna get so far down the legislative path that all of a sudden, all our meetings are like, well, there was this bill here. I think something needs to rise to a level of importance, and part of that is what I feel.
Okay, now that's fair, but I think, what is a process for it to rise? What is it that we agree upon that it rises? That's what I'm still sort of, if it has a public hearing, is that when we would say it's risen to a level?
I guess, I guess, it's kinda like, you know, I know when I see it, but if anyone else isn't better...
But we've got nine people seeing different things, so I'm just trying to clarify, what do we wanna do?
The question is, you wanna be able to respond to it if it's something of importance. The timing usually affords us an opportunity for it to be raised, whether it's by the Darien Times, the first electman, Dr. Landon, PTOs, anyone. There is a process, so you're not gonna miss out. I think the fear is, if there's something we should be commenting on, you want us to comment on, we should comment on it.
Right, as a board of education, right.
This regionalization, it per, but that's really, I mean, we, I've been on this board eight years, this is the first time we've dealt with this. So I don't think it's something that's, unless every legislative season is now gonna become this, you know, we have to be mindful of how we're spending our time and the administration's time. So I would say, if it's something where it's getting a lot of groundswell, we'll hear about it, we'll know about it, and we'll respond to it appropriately. I mean, it happened in this case, right? Am I...
No, I agree. The only thing I would add is, there was one instance where a bill came quickly to hearing. And so my, I think what we've agreed to and what is relevant here is that if we're going to speak as a board of education, we have to take a vote. So if a bill comes up quickly and we want to speak as a board, we have to call a special meeting to speak as a board.
So, okay, so I did talk to Tom about this, and I'm not saying that I would do this, because I like having all of your votes behind me.
Right.
But the chairperson, if something comes up quickly, can issue testimony on behalf of the board in the chairperson's name. And I'm not saying that because it's my particular style, but I do want to let you know that the chair is empowered to do that. And that's very typical, much like the first electman is empowered to do that, chairs of other committees are allowed to issue testimony on behalf of the board, it's part of being the board spokesman. But in, there was one bill, 7319, right? We all talked about it, but we did not take a formal vote.
Right.
And it seemed to cause some consternation later in the process. So my process, given time, would be to recommend that we always take a vote, because that helps really quite frankly, a chair know what to do.
Gives you a path forward.
Yeah. But if a bill did come up quickly, a chair could offer testimony. And I will tell you, P&amp;Z is looking for testimony on something, they don't have their stuff together, I said, you need to get it together, have a board meeting, if not, will you issue testimony? Yes, I'm empowered to issue testimony, but I'd like to bring it to my board. These are the kind of conversations that happen back and forth all the time. So best practice is to be able to bring it to the board. You should be aware that whoever is chair does have the ability to act as spokesperson.
But technically, any board member could go and offer testimony, not on behalf of the board.
Not in their elected capacity or be solicited for that reason.
Which, I think it's important to point out, individual capacity, I don't see any of us at this table having individual capacities as board members. We only act when we act together. And I think that when you, when you act singularly, it conveys to the person you're communicating, perhaps, that you have more authority than you actually have, because no one speaks for the board, except all of us, but for emergent situations when it's a chair. So I think when people seek our opinion as board members singularly, it's a very inappropriate function of a board member, because when we close these meetings and we walk out the door, we're like anybody else in this town. We should be listening more to educational issues and concerns and people who approach us, and we should be solicitous, and we should bring concerns that we hear, like anyone who comes and makes, you know, public comment. But we're, we're not board members, we don't have a capacity other than when we're meeting. And I think that's really quite clear, and I think that's what our processes are designed for. That's why a chair has a power to speak when we don't have time to meet and consider.
The only thing I can say, I agree we don't operate as a board, however, we are elected officials, there is a certain capacity there. So I think, I think there's a lot of lessons learned in the past few weeks, and we're trying to formalize the process, I think that's the goal. But I'm just, there are reasons that people reach out. I understand, the work of the board is done at the board, but we are elected officials and there is something that goes along with that.
So I think my recommendation is going to be to take up this communication issue at our retreat to clarify, because I think the attorneys would differ with you on that, but I think what's really good is to have a good dialogue about it, and so everyone's viewpoint on it can be represented and kind of the, let's take that into consideration and the yeses and noses can be had. So communication, I think, will be a retreat issue. I think it would just be wise to help clarify so that everyone knows how they're communicating, because I think, what I'd say is, I think this group works really well together, and so I'd just like to make sure that it's clear how we work so that that great camaraderie continues, right? I think this board does great work, and I think where we need to clarify, we can do it as a group and clarify. But I, I think some clarification probably would benefit us all. It's probably best that we have that conversation with a facilitated conversation on it. But does that help everyone in terms of, in general, our practice would be, if there is something that rises to the level of concern, and I know you have concerns about it, but I do think it's one of those things that like, you know it when you see it, like with regionalization.
Well, that, when we have nine people, that worries me when we say, you know it when you'll see it. I mean, because five of us could see it and four of us may not, or vice versa.
But if five people see it, they can compel it on an agenda.
Okay, then, then we can move it forward that way, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean, that's like an actual process, if three people see it, they can compel it on an agenda. Or you could just ask to have it on agenda, just like this one. I had two people ask whether it be on the agenda. So it didn't need to be compelled, it was a worthwhile conversation. So I think, and then you do your best, I think what we do then is vote, and, you know, we move forward from there, that it's very clear. And then everyone has a clear path forward and clear expectations.
Then to clarify, since we don't, I mean, just talk about process, independent of legislature or anything else, since we don't approve the agenda, what would be the mechanism to add it, independent, of course, contacting the chair, say, please, can we talk about this? I mean, that's first and foremost, of course, but make sure we're all clear on the process.
So I think hopefully you trust whoever's in the chair's seat.
Oh, yeah, totally.
If three people ask for it to be added, then it'll be added. Or at a board meeting, three people can say, we're talking about something, and I'd like it to be added, and they can compel it that way. I mean...
So for three people, okay, I thought it was different, but...
In the policy reads that three people can compel an agenda on an item, although I'm not sure if there's been an agenda item not raised by a board member in my tenure that's been asked. So I think...
That contradicts Robert's rule of...
Yeah, Roberts is, is a simple majority.
It does, so your personal policy overrides Roberts' rule of order. Roberts' rule of order is a guide. So our policy reads, in board policy, if there's an issue, three, three members can compel it to an agenda. But I find most chairs have always, the advice I was given, if you see a real need and someone feels strongly about it, it never hurts to put it on.
Perfect, no, that's great then.
Is everybody clear? Are we voting on something? No?
No.
No.
Okay, now we're on to Ms. Sion.
All right, Mrs. Sion.
I have a P A R, but I will have Nadine posted on the web tomorrow, because you are appointing tonight, I hope, the Director of Instructional Technology, Dr. Joan McGinnigan.
So it's the only thing on the P A R, so I'm gonna call it the P A R dated March 26, 2019. May I have a motion to approve the P A R dated March 26, 2019? Mr. Burke.
Mr. Maroni.
Mr. Maroni, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries, eight one. All right, thank you very much. Is there any public comment this evening?
Julie Best, 38, Red Rose Circle. On field trips, not my opinions, I promise I won't share those right now, but I did wanna point out early in this process that this would be huge change and the communication to parents on this change is critical, recognizing that fifth graders and seventh graders and their parents have not been promised these overnight trips next year. I think there is a tremendous number of them that do expect these trips, so I think it needs to be communicated to them that they won't be happening and why they won't be happening, so that they understand it and what will happen instead, when we know that. But sooner than later would be really, really good.
Catherine Berkowski, 152, O'Conne, Sibley North. I was hoping to be the first, but not the last parent, I'm sure, to talk about field trips, but Julie got up faster than I did. So one thing I, well, there's a couple things I wanna say. First of all, yes, the parents are the ones who write the checks for the field trips, but there's so much work that goes into them. It's, I mean, I can't even imagine how much work goes into figuring out where everyone's gonna sleep, how they're gonna eat, what they're gonna see. I mean, it is huge, and they do a lot. I mean, it is huge, and they do a lot. I will tell you that I had, my, my child went, I only have one, she's a sixth grader. She came home filthy, dirty, frozen, thankfully without salmonella, and happier than she'd ever been in her life, talking about Boston. So I do think that what Julie said is important, that it needs to get out. I also do think that we need to listen to, you know, the administration. It's really not just a parent thing, as much as I'd love for them, you know, I'm going to have to do the explaining to my now sixth grader that she's not going to Boston if that's what happens. But, but it is, I do think we do have to listen to the administration, because they put hours and hours and hours to make this successful. Maybe the idea is to simplify things. I think, you know, I think there's probably a middle ground that would make parents happy. But the other one thing that I wanted to say is, I think for some kids, this kind of field trip is beyond educational. I think it becomes, the eighth grade in particular, becomes some kind of like rite of passage, right? So it's going to take time, if that needs to be changed, it's going to take time culturally to change that. And I do think there's going to need to be a lot of communication about it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? May I entertain a motion to adjourn? Mrs. McCann and Mrs. Ritchie, and I got it right, all in favor? Mr. Dean and Mr. Maroni, I need a hand. Just walking out.